Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm calling the meeting of the Planning Board of July 18th, 2022 to order at 6:34 PM. I'd like a roll call, please.
The NRT is present.
Robert Darian.
Carol Hoxes. And online we have.
Mike Proscow on Zoom.
Thank you. And Laura Schifrin present. The meeting is, I will say it now that the meeting is being recorded and we will salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you all. Thank you to our veterans and our military in service now. Under 1.4 Chairman's additions or deletions to the agenda unforeseen prior to 48 hours of this meeting. I would like to ask that we delete 1, under 1.6, the minutes of June 27th, 2022, as they have not been completed yet. If that's okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. 1.5 Review voluntary response forms received for Planning Board vacancy, which is the associate position. There are none. Okay, thank you. And under 1.6, approval of the May 23rd, 2022, and June 13th, 2022 minutes, which all the board members have received. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Go ahead.
I'm making a motion when some of those minutes.
Okay, as received.
I second the motion.
And there's a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
The NRT is yes.
Robert Darian, yes.
Carol Hoxes, yes. Michael?
Mike Proscow, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you. So we're early. So I will go on to correspondence, okay? Under 4, 4.1. Where do we, do we all have the letter from the Town Administrator? Providing information about Mass General Law Chapter 40R zoning overlay districts.
I read it, but I didn't print it.
What are you on, which I? It's 4.1.
Oh, okay. He's actually going to be here in person, so he'd like to call in. So if we have time, I'll call him and have him call in, but yeah.
Okay, why don't I at the moment just go to 1, to 4.2? Which is the notices from Townsend and other towns. Robert?
Notices from other towns. Town clerk summary. Town of Ashby, ZB zoning board of appeals. Notice of decision granted a special permit expansion of the non-conforming structure to show Bajo. Town of Groton, planning board. Notice of decision granted a site plan review permit to mark havoc town Groton for project at 342 Main Street, Florence Grove Elementary School, Phase 2. Town of Pepper, ZBA. Withdrawal of ZBA application for administrative appeal property addressed at 222 Main Street. Another zoning board of appeals notice of decision granted a special permit for an accessory apartment at 28 Banquash Street. Town of Shirley, zoning board of appeals. Notice of public hearing, August 1st, 2022, at 7:00 PM. On an application to expand, alter, or change a non-conforming use of or structure variance from zoning by law section 3.4.2A, I think, 1. Zoning board of appeals notice of decision to grant the variance. Grant the variance granting relief from ZB zoning board legislation 4.13.4, Paragraph C, Sentence 1, relating to residence of development of a minimum lot size of 80,000 square feet, provided that no more than 20% of the lot may be covered with impervious surfaces with four conditions to Fox Run Holdings LLC. Notices are filed to land use officer review respectfully submitted. Beth Faxon, Planning Board Administrator.
Thank you, Robert. We still have a couple of minutes, so I'd like to go to 4.3, which is to discuss and vote Planning Board Representative to Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee. Currently, Beth has been serving on that committee for us. She'd like to offer it to any board member who would like to do that, if you would like.
Can we go how much times and vote?
That I can tell you.
A meeting once a month, typically, although they'll be meeting every other month for the next six months, I believe. So the meetings are online. They run Wednesdays from 2:30 to 3:30, typically.
End of the day. Can't do it.
Okay, I know. And you're already on, yeah, so.
We would like to.
No, because I came to Wednesdays from that time. I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't. But Beth.
I'm happy to continue.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Beth Faxon to the Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee.
Can't make a motion to Beth as a, as a Monticello's.
She's, she would be the Planning Board Representative.
The Planning Board Representative.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, seconded.
Okay, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll have to take a roll call vote, please.
The NRT is yes.
Robert, sorry.
Carol Hoxes, yes. Michael?
Mike Proscow, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you. Good time, gotta fill these things in. Open meeting law, MMA update, the House. Oh, yeah, I think we all have been noticed to death on this one. Every other email is this. The House passing of the bill regarding remote participation with, which authorizes remote participation until March 31st, 2023. So this is just a notice that we've all received and bear with us this evening, since this is the first time Planning Board is met in person for 10 years, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we do a lot on Zoom. So, all right. Do you know how long Eric wanted?
I don't, but if you're ready, I can send my text to give him a call and let him know if he can call in.
Let me go to work, let me go, I can do a couple of things under work session.
I'm gonna wait 15 minutes.
All right, I'm gonna pass 3.1, we're gonna do that in work session. Because we're probably gonna take a break and you're gonna get us.
The copy.
And also 3.2 is gonna take a little bit longer.
And Carol, there were a few more notices from Townsend that weren't read. I didn't give them to Robert to read, but they're in the file. So I don't know if you want me to.
Would, would you do it then?
Quickly go through them. Yeah, we did receive a notice from the Townsend Historic District Commission regarding Swanfield Greenways application. And that basically they were requiring permission to install a wood split rail fence on the Harvard Church property owned by the Townsend Historical Society. That was granted. That was approved. So that decision is in your file. And I also included a, an update from the Land Use Office. Michael Crowley submitted, and that was distributed through email. But that was documenting the regulation, the stormwater management regulation change that you had made at the last meeting. So that's also in there. And I also added the legal notice for the zoning board of appeals, which is on Wednesday night, starting at 7:00. Again, a hybrid meeting for 256 Main Street. For zoning board, yeah. They're zoning, giving stuff, putting more stuff, logging.
Okay. And I'm gonna take a recommendation under work session for that, to that. It is 6:45. On the button. I've called the public hearing meeting to order at 6:45. 6:45 PM for 24 Old City Road Scenic Roads application on July 18th, 2022. Like to introduce the board members. We have.
The NRTs.
Robert Darian.
Carol Hoxes. Michael?
Mike Proscow, present.
And Laura Schifrin. Now it's the public hearing or sign-in sheet, which is around, it's there, so please sign in. I'm gonna read the legal notice. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 40, 15C, Scenic Roads, Townsend General Bylaws, Chapter 106, and Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Article 4, 175, 31-34 hearings under the Scenic Road Act. The Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 18th, 2022, at 6:45 PM in the Selectment's Chambers, 272 Main Street, regarding the application from Walter and Cheryl DeLeo to remove two sections of a stone wall totaling 25 feet at 24 Old City Road, MAP 7, Block 26, Lot 0. Alternatively, the public way may access the meeting. Public may access the meeting via the found in Zoom link, which I'm not going to read. Parties wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so at the hearing or in writing prior to the hearing. Copies of this application are available for review at Town Hall during business hours. Laura Schifrin, Chairman, Planning Board. It's published in the Sentinel Enterprise on July 1st, 2022, and July 8th, 2022. Do I have to read the copy of the butter's thing at the bottom? Forgive me, I'm not real experienced. I have cheat sheet.
Neither are we.
All right, so now at this, at this time, I'll ask the applicants to present what it is you'd like to do to the board.
I'm doing, yeah, my name's Walter DeLeo, my wife's Carol. We live across the street, but we're moving across the street. 24, and I'm putting a garage under. Don't be easy for it, getting my garage under, it's like that. Existing driveway is still gonna be used for a while while we're doing everything. It's right on the corner, it's not very good access. If you went out there, sorry, you'd know what I was talking about. And it's only one section of wall. It's 15-foot driveway, but they want it five feet on each side of it to make it 25 feet wide. So it's only one section, only five, it's like. And it's not really a wall, it's just a little pile of rocks. And there are no trees involved. So it does more than the stone or the rock. Yeah, there's rocks covered with vines and leaves and dirt and.
This. Okay.
Just coming down Old City Road, this is the corner, this is the existing driveway. We want to put this in, okay. This is the real section of the wall we want to.
You can't see.
Okay, just continue driving.
So there are no mature trees in this area.
No.
So my question was, it came up, the 25-foot dimension thing from where?
I'm having a 15-foot driveway.
Yes.
And then in the bylaw things there, it says something about five feet on each side.
Inside.
Or fire access. Five, 10 plus 15, 20. Yeah. No, it's in here on the bylaw.
Beth, the application is complete?
Yeah.
The driveway, the driveway current.
Mr. DeLeo?
And this is the section, but they're not just.
It's gonna be a paved asphalt driveway?
Beginning, they want it paved 15 feet. And then.
They wish they did.
All driveway, that whole re-removed?
For now, we're gonna keep it.
I understand that.
And there's no real driveway, it just comes off the road into like gravel.
Gravel, probably.
Gravelly lawn and such.
Just. And I think that is planned here, just. And that's all he's doing is just opening up for a driveway.
That's right.
Is there any reason that we should have to do a sidewalk?
I, no, I don't think so. I think the sidewalk.
That's what he said.
Any other members have any other questions?
Oh, Beth, is there a problem even here? If his name is Walker with LTR and then in the notices with ages. Is that, is there any comment?
No, the decision will be made out to Minneapolis.
Okay.
So that will, yeah.
Okay, so I didn't know, like, there's a different name will make some.
Good catch.
Could we read this?
So it says here, from the edge of the townway pavement to the property line shall 10 feet wider at the pavement edge than the width of the driveway, as required by the zoning bylaws, Section 6.3.3.5, and shall narrow to the width of the driveway at the property line. That's where the 25.
Yeah, and I, I, I was coming saying when you guys said, so, yeah.
Put a fire apparatus to swing in.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the oil truck.
Not sure the board.
There were, just wanted to leave some feedback from the town departments.
Right here. I didn't get to that yet.
Yeah, that's it.
But that would be next. Any referrals?
It was regarding 24 Old City Road.
Yep.
These are referrals to our board. Highway Superintendent, after visiting the location 24 Old City Road, removing the section of stone wall and moving the driveway would increase site distance and safety. I strongly encourage moving the driveway. Jim Smith, Highway Superintendent. Board of Selectmen, why are there two areas? Can the stones be relocated from a new driveway to the existing driveway? Veronica Kell, Chair, Board of Selectmen. Land Use Coordinator, I have no concerns or issues. I believe the new driveway would be safer for the resident and vehicle traffic on the roadway. Michael Crowley, Land Use Coordinator. Water, there are no water lines in the area. Signed, David Vigian, Park Superintendent. Conservation Committee, Commission, no comment, Board of Health, no comment. So the only other question I guess that surfaced was from the Board of Selectmen, and that would be about taking the old stones and putting where the old.
The amount of stones we're gonna take out, not much, but what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put them right to the right, right to the left of the existing driveway. As it would be built up a little bit more.
I would feel that you would recognize. So anyway, I wanted to review this with, prepared by Beth Faxon, our Planning Board Administrator.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, so we'll find down now to public questions or comments. Anybody else in the audience?
Do you have anyone signing online?
I don't know who Marie B. is.
Looks like she has a hand up.
Do you want to identify yourself, Marie? Don't they have to identify during a public hearing? I'm not sure why the hand is up.
Oh, I think it's unmuted. You're unmuted.
I think that's the.
Oh.
Yeah.
So much for my technology.
I'm right there with you.
Okay, but I will, yes.
Someone is to comment at an hearing and yes, the camera needs to be on, but they do not need to recognize themselves if they're not gonna be commenting.
Thank you for that clarification. I was misinformed because I thought everybody had to be if they were in a public hearing. You had to know what they were, or that's identifying them. Okay.
Mary, just make that a comment. In past Scenic Roads decisions, the Planning Board has, upon approval, conditioned the applicant to take before and after photos. I don't know if that rings a bell or not, but that's just an option for the board having. Reduct means the whole process.
That would be great.
Easy enough, I feel.
Okay, that would be great. Um, okay, hearing no other support or opposition? Can I just close the hearing now, or we vote after? Or can I entertain a motion before? Do what I want? Okay, then. I'll entertain a motion to approve this application for.
Why do we have? Anybody else see them?
Yeah, but I have it as 23 on.
That's where we.
Oh, is that where you live? Okay. For the application on 24 Old City Road, a movement of the driveway.
I'll make a motion for 24 Old City Road and moving the back.
For the application, we'll just write it per the application, for the decision.
And if you would like to improve that condition, I would put it in a motion as well. If you wish to.
Um. It's, that's fine, I think it's a good idea.
I can make a decision.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, so, and in the motion that they provide before and after pictures.
Okay.
That it's a subject to, the permit is subject to before and after pictures.
You want to, I'm going to make it part of the motion. Okay, so yeah, make a motion for 24 Old City Road to move the driveway, open the, then taking pictures of before and after making the road or the driveway.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes, NRTs.
Yes, Robert Darian, I think it's a good idea.
Yes, Carol Hoxes.
Thank you, Michael?
Mike Proscow, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much. Entertain a motion to close the hearing, please, at 6:59 PM. Oh my God, I have one minute.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing for 24 Old City Road at 6:59. 59 PM.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
The NRTs, yes.
Robert?
Robert Darian.
Carol Hoxes, yes. Michael?
Mike Proscow, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. But that's gonna make pretty nice.
I don't know if you know it or not, but when you have somebody that is on Zoom, it always has to be a roll call vote. And we have a member.
This is the first time we can do this, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is what we'll be doing, the notice of decision. This is just a sample. Okay, let's go. The board is signing it, and then.
Okay.
Oh, that's one.
Six, seven.
I don't know.
But I'll talk you out with all the pages. And then, so we can't do any work, so it's 21 days.
No, we can do work right after the wall.
Well, yeah, after, once it's. No, no, here. Correct. Then we can go.
Okay.
Okay, and Mary, can I just ask for your signature on the decision that the board would allow there?
Instead of everyone, once it's ready?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I need a vote to appoint the chairman to sign the decision outside of the meeting.
Yes, make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to sign the.
Have the chairman sign.
Have the chairman sign the.
Decision.
The decision after the meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Lauren.
Okay.
Great.
Michael has chimed in. Okay. Thanks, Michael. Roll call vote, please.
The NRTs, yes.
Carol Hoxes, yes. Michael?
Mike Proscow, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay, thank you. I am now going to open the public hearing for 256 Main Street, Site Plan Review Special Permit, July 18th, 2022, at 7:01 PM. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 40A and the Town of Townsend zoning bylaws, Section 145-42 Site Plan Review Special Permit and Section 14565, the Townsend Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Selectment's Chambers at 272 Main Street. The applicant, Lorden Revocable Trust, Michael Lorden, trustee, is proposing to convert a pre-existing non-conforming commercial building to multifamily residential use by constructing a four-one-bedroom, by constructing four-one-bedroom apartments at 256 Main Street, MAP 51, Block 31, Lot 0. Alternatively, the public may access through a Zoom link. Not reading it. Parties wishing to speak in support or in opposition to this application may do so at the hearing or in writing prior to the hearing. Copies of the application are available for review at Town Hall during business hours. Laura Schifrin, Chairman, Planning Board, published in Sentinel Enterprise on July 1st, 2022, and July 8th, 2022. Um, so, Michael?
Yes.
Do you wanna let us, just tell us in your own words what you're doing?
Well, it's been a commercial building for over 40 years. And it's, so I decided to make the, to run it over to individual units for residential. And to do that, part of it was to get site plan review for parking. And to do that, part of it was to get site plan review for parking, so this was the right time to do it because the the veterinarians' business grew and the driver's business grew and we started up to a couple cars in my, I had that big back lot. Ended up being nine cars and they would daily come in, in and out. Plus, their business grew and they get more traffic coming off of one nineteen and parking there, in the front and then coming back and back on to one nineteen. So I um, I just thought, well, if I'm never gonna make a change, this is the right time to do it. That might have been very helpful, helping me navigate the process and so. And I met with the, first I met with the um water health, Rich Metcalf, and he's the one that I, my septic system is relatively new there. And I have the capacity for the one bedroom, so. He said I'd be good to go over there and then I, I met with Alyssa and the stroke board to change the whole front to bring it back more to the period and and update that, so um. Some of that process I'm going ahead because I gotta do that work anyways, so. Those doors, I've pretty much had it. So this was the the right time to do it. And so I'm gonna try to do it the best that I can do is what the town wants it. And I've got um, I only have four parking spots now for this one, so I'm gonna lose, I I got nine cars going out or coming in, so it'll be nicer for my other tenants to rent two fifty, two building.
Yeah.
And um I'm excited about getting forward, moving, moving ahead and getting it going.
Okay, why don't we go to questions of the board? We did have a site, some of us did go to the site.
Yes.
So. Do the, does the building have like a, because I I heard that the two fifty-six and then building next over there that owned by you?
Yes.
But the fifty-six is I don't know how, it's like weirdly placed there, like those.
It's just. It's on that little piece of land.
Yeah, maybe, so. Does it have like, like permission for easement in case like we're separating it, right? So.
Yeah, I guess it, the timing was pretty good because Tom Gustafson was renewing his notary stuff this morning, though, downstairs with Kevin. And um, we had, so I had been asking about that because I remember a few years ago I had Tom combined it onto, onto one. Now, because it's always shared the same septic system.
Okay. We didn't know that at the sidewalk.
Yeah, since since Bob Boba Shaw. And.
Yeah, I remember.
It it was always shared the same because that little lot, there is no land to it.
Right.
Yeah, it came over from the pheasant family. And that was, I don't know, nineteen hundred or eighteen something. Uh, so, yeah, I would never, I would never, I would never sell the property. My daughter will end up taking it over, but I uh but yeah, it would have to, if it was ever sold, it would have to be as, you only want to lose one piece.
Okay, well, that that was a question, so.
Yeah, I had that question, that's why I.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, is is there a deed? Oh, do you get one tax bill or two?
My daughter takes care of all that now. I uh I must get, I must get two. I must get two.
If you had it in one ownership, it would be both buildings on one tax bill. And that's usually done by deed, so it and and I'm not saying that that's something that couldn't have been missed. And it's still the way it was. Um, so we'll, I I it's good to know it.
Sure.
I think it makes things easier for you in the long run. So you're changing that one, which is a commercial building. The second building that's on there, is that also, is that mixed use? I mean, you've got a business and. And three apartments, so that's a four-unit building.
Correct.
Okay. Um. But your request is.
Yes, is that.
Make sure I know what's right. So I guess that the.
And I also know.
I don't have so many old city and not. Yeah, but I thought I had it. They're all old city.
Yeah, you want this?
I have this, I have the publishing ring thing. Oh, wait a minute, it's all in my folder. I mean, I know it's all in my folder. Okay, I got it.
You got it.
I just have a couple of questions again, the idea of what what your goals are. So, and again, I haven't had, I'm not sure you two have already presented, so I apologize for.
That's fine.
For not understanding the project school.
Yeah.
Um, so um, I did not see any commentary from the Star Society.
Yeah, there's a, there's a approval there, yeah, they have. Yeah, but they, I don't see no. Pass rule.
Thirty, thirty first.
I don't see no comment.
So the, so.
You have the.
Um, the the current, there are current apartments there now and.
No, it was veterinarian on the first floor and driver right on the second floor.
Okay, so it's all, the entire building's commercial.
Correct.
So the entire building's going to be residential?
Right.
You know, I I need, I know that we need housing as much as possible here. Um, and I'm certainly encouraged that. My concerns are personal level, um. So I that, you know, our our center of town um, there's very little commercial stuff. Um, I mean, the heart of the old village feeling that would have been here. And um, so I just wondered how people thought about at least keeping the storefront and keeping a small retail part of that that would encourage pedestrian traffic and, you know, um, have an opportunity for small businesses uh put in uh something that would be um compatible to town green and, you know, and stuff like that. So it's, you know, all I'm doing is presenting something because um it it's always been a commercial building. And I understand it's not viable economically and order to keep all that building for that and the cost to do it. So I understand the the benefits of, and we want to save the building too. Um, my concern is that we're losing another little um old classic business that used to exist on our town green. And um, so if you look at other communities, they're trying to encourage businesses back into their old centers. And so I, 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 that's my only reservation about what you're doing and um and I, I, again, I think everything you're doing is very positive. Um, but I, and when I think of our little town center, I get very nervous.
Yeah. Well, like, you know, I've owned that, I've owned the building for forty years and the town has changed so much and.
I remember it forty years ago.
Yeah, very well.
I do, I remember, I remember the insurance company.
And and how easy it was to get in and out of everything to get onto one nineteen, but there's just a, the hardest thing for that is a commercial spot is is for 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 uh your clients, customers. It's it's hell getting.
Yeah.
And then back and back on is, yeah, very difficult. Which it, because years ago, the traffic count on one of these probably doubled now what it was.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe three times.
Maybe.
It goes.
There's a lot more traffic now than there was in the seventies.
Yeah, they go by a lot, but um. So we'll stay with the, and the the stroke people are already happy, we're gonna stay with, we're gonna bring it up to the period level, so it'll have a much better look, much better appeal from the road too.
Yeah, I I I saw the the.
The red.
Yeah, and and you can clean and make it.
It'll be so nice.
I I I I'm a sucker for historical things, so I, I saw it.
The metal is sad on it, it's good shape and it looks really nice. That's like single pane. All that glass is just single pane glass.
I do have a question, I don't know whether you can answer that, but um, I think we heard it in, in the, when we did the walk through, is that for each uh room that you're gonna be renting and you're gonna have on a parking lot and this is supposed to also have like a guest or like or like a ratio of like this many parking lot for each apartment? And then you have to have like for four, you have to have two parking guests or something around there, so.
Yeah, are you accommodating? I have a couple of them.
Yeah, there's more than enough parking there for what he wants to do with four, because he only has to have one per unit with a one-bedroom, but he's got more than enough room to have two per unit.
Actually, it's, it's room back there for kids to actually play if you can't now.
Yeah, we want that, we were there.
It's 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 big, the opening in between the the, there's a nice patch of land.
Right, I've got some push in there and that part of it's uh pretty good, it'll be a lot easier for Kevin Smith to plow it too. Yeah. Well, they, the bit that, the driver, it's cars, they end up staying there overnight. So they weren't there in snowstorms, it was tough.
And also, there was something that I brought up to zoning people, and it was a common uh that in the front of the building, for the parking.
Yes.
But we see a lot of parking, parking there, that I don't know, it would be easier to have parking there like sideways instead.
Exactly, right. They would have to.
Yeah, because it's easier when you're coming in, boom, and then instead of doing the whole maneuver to turn around, you already just.
They, if they pull in not completely parallel, but mostly parallel, then they've got the lights, there'd only be two cars there. And if it is, then they can turn without even because Billy Schultz's son is is tennis, they have to, well, they're all a ways, still safe, but they're all the ways. But my father comes way up further, so they'd be able to come in and just go out, it'd be much, much safer.
And the target audience, like who, because I heard also that you were looking more for older people and not, but.
I typically, I typically rent my buildings, my apartments to local people, yeah. Because they see the lower rents, because my rents are a bit lower, and I get calls from after the concrete and then they all, they can't even say Townsend. But I, I always uh, I always, I just try to advertise locally and and it'll be uh, I'm sure that the units will be rented by local people. That's my history anyways, I I do try hard to get locally because they stay long.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's all, yeah.
There's no sidewalk along here, but no.
There, there kind of is.
There's a tunnel there, yeah, down to the funeral home from the light.
Anderson's, it's a sidewalk and then you get to to my property line and then it's a Billy Schultz.
Wait a minute, that isn't, no, I think it was like Flores or something, because.
There is a Flores next door and then Anderson Funeral Home.
Oh, yeah, I completely forgot it was a funeral home there, I only look at the Flores.
Tell about how pretty the building is, there's a funeral home and everything.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I, so here's the picture.
Yes.
So were you saying that there was gonna be two?
Well, my concern is that we keep talking about putting sidewalks in in the center of town. We keep that sound.
Yeah, they're recording and probably isn't done.
So do we have to stop the public hearing in the center of town? Are we gonna?
That's why we do that hybrid.
Oh, that's interesting.
So we have lost Mike, basically, Mike Verasco?
Yeah.
He might want to run out and bring him in.
Oh, I can see him on here.
It's just the projector that went out.
Oh, Michael?
Yeah, ask him.
He's on mute. Michael? Michael Verasco. We have lost, I have Mike Crowley.
Mike Crowley is here. You're still on.
I see you.
Yeah, there's still one.
And I I had Mike Verasco until a minute ago. Well, I can't answer.
See if I can get it back on.
No, just.
You're still on Zoom and it still says it's recording, so I don't know if you're still.
Give me a couple of seconds here for this to come on. Stand by, stand by power, the name. That's why.
The battery's in the house, it's a cake. My computer is never gonna go down.
Have you moved the mouse on the computer in a while? It might be the computer thinks it went to sleep.
No, we had a power surge here, Mike.
Yeah, that's why that's out. So, and I just texted.
I don't know why this isn't coming back on. There it is, there it is, very.
Okay.
Hold on.
Here you go.
Um. I think the way the discussion.
All right, but excuse me, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but we got a problem with this machine, I'm gonna have to you're gonna have to give me a few minutes to get it back on.
Okay, so we need to stop?
Um, we don't really need to stop, you're recording still, so.
Okay.
Let's just drive on, then, it's just the live feed is not on.
Oh, to the public.
Right.
But we're being recorded and we can still go on, okay. So with that, um, I would, I I would like to now take the time to do the referral comments and then we can discuss further. Um. I know, I know I have questions and I'd like to hear the other from the referral comments.
This is the referral comments for two fifty-six Main Street. The Water Department must upgrade water service a meter to one and a half inches. If the town requires a fire suppression system, the line must be six inches. Signed David Vigian, Board Superintendent. Building Commission, the building will be protected by sprinklers. Parking with a will be slightly decreased. Applicant has already received approval for exterior changes and historic district committee. Signed Eric Struck Tribe. Um, Board of Health, the towns board health has previously approved the existing septic serving the property for this proposal on July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. As a condition of the pool, the towns board health will require that the Title V inspection be performed on the system to meet the requirements of thirteen ten C M R uh fifteen point three oh one, paragale five. This inspection report must indicate the system is crashing and must be submitted prior to the board and health signing off on any building permit. Signed Rich Metcalf, agent of the town board. The Fire Department, the building will need to be brought up to current code including by not limited to fire suppression system monitored by the fire alarm control panel. A knock box will also be required, signed Michael Glinley, Captain Townsend Fire Department. Land Use Coordinator, the applicant has worked the land use office and preparing its project. The project proposal has no earth disturbance and will utilize existing parking and septic. I believe the proposed use and as well as the improvements to the front of the facade of the building will be beneficial to the town, specifically the downtown area, signed Michael Crowley, Land Use Coordinator. Townsend Housing Authority, at the seven thirteen twenty-two week Townsend Housing Authority meeting, the board moved, if approved, we request that two members on the first floor be fifty-five plus senior housing outfitted as age in place, signed Jody DeSantis, um, the Townsend Housing Authority Main Street. Assesses office, from the assesses perspective, the project would improve. The value and assessment of the property, which would increase tax revenues for the town. Signed Vicki Dykman, board of assesses. And the conservation commission has no complaint. This was viewed by Vex, Vex Paxton, planning board, make sure.
So, hearing the comments from the other departments now, um, do you have any comments to that?
Oh, they've been great, I, the, uh. The sprinkle system is, um, it's being designed by an engineer, so.
Yeah.
I know, uh, Dave said, he said six inch, I, I don't know that for sure, I guess it would be whatever.
Whatever's required.
Engineer says, it has to be.
Yeah.
But, that's why, but other than that. I think everything is pretty much what we talked about.
Um, the Townsend Housing Authority, is there any problem requesting those two units?
No, I mean, I prefer a couple of fifty-five.
Right, uh, but it's kinda implies they want them handicapped accessible.
Well.
Well, the first one, the first one.
Aging in place.
That's pretty much, that one in the front.
Yeah.
It's just that one step up, so I can.
Oh, I didn't even know there was one, the way it was set.
Yeah, it's just a set like that, so you could easily make that wheelchair accessible.
So aren't there gonna be two on the first floor?
Yeah, one in the front and one in the back.
Okay, but the one in the back, you have, would have stairs going into that one?
Yeah, like four steps going up.
It's just, um. A good opportunity, I think. If you, um. At the time that you're doing this renovation. And. Hopefully it would be like a win-win.
Sure.
Like if you did two fifty-five and over, um, aging in place. Would they? Uh, I'll ask our state rep right now.
I'll have to change that.
Yeah, please, um. So if we do age, if we do, um, the seven order like we did for. Uh, at, uh, Townsend Woods. So those are fifty-five and over and they're aging in place. But, and they count towards our affordable housing for the town.
Sure.
So. If we did that here. They're aging in place forever. And how does, are they required to be under the same guidelines of affordable housing?
Hey.
Are they still gonna be income based if we do?
Yes.
Okay, and then it's still gonna be the same thing about getting the applications and. Cause there's a process to stay in affordable housing, there's a process.
Um, and I just wanna be clear again, I'm answering the question, how to state representative to the housing authority.
And not as the OS, right, I didn't ask the selectmen, I'm asking the state rep.
Um, I think it will be a win-win situation because if you, um. If you put this as an affordable units, these two on the bottom floor. Um, even income driven. Because of the, um. Uh, we are in a bridge property, so you're gonna be getting market rate for an important price anyway on it, so. You actually will probably be making out on the deal. As far as the, it would be a, uh, a deed restriction, um, that would have to go in place. And I believe that it would fall under the, the left.
Yeah.
Local initiative program, which would be a fifteen year. And that would automatically, so no, would not be in perpetuity, which is fifteen year and then we do. Um, and then if somebody by chance bought the building, then they had a decision whether or not they wanted to keep that, uh, affordable or not. Or would be, you know. But those would be the only restrictions that I see that would. And it would give the town two more, uh, affordable.
Units.
Units, which we desperately need.
Right. I think Jody was still looking into. Where the perpetuity numbers came from in that report that we got. Um. Cause I, I guess I didn't know that Trump Lake Village was perpetuity, which is what that list stated, so we're trying to. Get the right information.
I, I actually had a meeting in regards to that, we can talk about that off going.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I think those need to be adjusted.
Okay. So, one of the other points I wanted to make, just for the public hearing itself. And, and you have every right to do this. Um. As an owner, I think, my opinion. But, um, when you go from commercial to residential, the commercial is the higher use. So you, it's considered that you're lowering the use of your property by being residential, you can never go back. You can never make it higher again.
Oh, sure.
So once you do this, this is where it is.
I'm all in, yeah, yeah, right.
Okay, so I think there's a few points here. Um, one about the, um. Contingency or subject to, or however you, um, want to say it in the decision. Um. Would be the two affordable units on the first, or, or aging in place units on the first floor. And then the way that, well, a couple of things, this, that's a state highway.
Yes.
So if you look down the road, which we did the other day, you see the sign says state highway, no parking. That sign appears about. Uh, where Anderson Funeral Home is, so. But these may be grandfathered. So obviously, um, somehow this, I'm not sure, but somehow for you, the state would be involved. And if you went to the sideways, you could have your handicap parking right out there, you know, for.
You'd have to, because a handicap would never wanna be in the back, right?
Correct, correct. So there's a couple of, a few things here that should be in the decision. Um.
Didn't ask the question. Only because, you know, we've talked a lot in the past about putting sidewalks in the center of town. You know, getting grants, you can put sidewalks in, so now, if you're gonna put sidewalks in, how is it gonna affect your parking? If, if in some future day you get a grant to put in sidewalks all over the center of town.
When, when, when I did the walk through.
Yeah.
When, if you were to put it sideways, in my opinion too. If you were to put it sideways, it just leaves enough space to actually have a.
That walkway.
A walkway.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, because the.
Now, would you have to back, back out? Or is it a, or a key drive, like, I.
No, so, no, so it would be. But you got the.
Yeah, okay.
It was parallel, yeah, it was parallel, but, yeah. So this is the, it's the building, so the, the parking will go sort of like this sideways coming in.
Okay.
The road, and then the walk, the sidewalk will, um, rise.
Okay, cause I know when I drive one nineteen, cause there's pictures in the car.
Yeah.
That they filled it over, I hate this car where it's parked, because every time I come down that road. I always feel it's out in the middle of the street. Every time I come down here, I'm like. I, I can't believe they let them park like that, cause I feel like it's.
There is, there is a, there was a car that day, too, that was in front of the, uh, the. The guy that was the, the bridges and stuff like that, I forgot the name of it.
Yeah, but yeah, the lines.
The lines, yeah, then he was parked like that. And, and he was completely in, but you walk, you can actually walk in front of the car. So he still has, but they just, he was a bad. Parked, so.
I, um.
Yeah, otherwise I'm all for putting it into a plan, it's a great idea.
And I, I, I just need more information, um. Have you appealed to the zoning board yet?
Your hearing is Wednesday.
Is there a formal site plan being prepared?
Just a plan that you, this plan in the packet that. You know, uh, blocking the body, bed, boot tray, your engineer. One by ten bolt.
Okay, um, in the.
Just a minute, please.
In the application, um, Robert. In the application that we received, the planning board did have a letter in there, and there's a request for a waiver. Were you able to reach out, or would you like? But he, he was asking for a waiver of, um, one forty-five forty-two. Which is the drawing requirement, and.
Right.
Cause he did not submit with the application, a registered site plan.
Right.
Instead, he has submitted some older plans. And, uh, so the board will be asked to vote on that waiver, whether you find that acceptable or not.
Alright.
Um, I have that letter.
Well, now we got, I think we. Um.
But this is.
I'm gonna.
This is what it is, right?
That's one, yeah, yes, that's one.
No, I mean, nothing has changed. This is how the building sits, this is where the parking is.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Well, um.
This is in your packet, yeah, I think.
It is, yeah, it's, uh, I wanna say, we've been using.
Okay, um.
And then the septic. Looking on the walls.
Okay, that's, well, I thought I mentioned here. It shows this. Well, this was the septic, yeah. Right, um.
It doesn't show the parking spot.
Um. I, I, I'm just gonna tell you what I feel, but, um. The, this. Um. I think I'd like to know more about. You know, probably answer with the nation on the property. I have a schematic floor plan here that we just looked at. Um, we've got some input from the other town departments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't think anybody's opposed to the project.
Mm-hmm.
But I also think that we have to have a broader understanding. Of what's gonna be there when it's done, and, um, there is not. In my view, not adequate information on that, and. Um, so if this is for, if this hearing here is for. Uh, a preliminary approval based on further information that we might wanna see. I think I'd feel a lot more comfortable, um, but.
What information are you looking for out there?
Well, for example, normally when you do a site plan review with. Other planning boards and other communities. You know, people on those boards ask questions about lighting, where dumpsters are. Um, landscape. Um, so they get a better vision of what the entire project would look like.
But these buildings are already built, they're existing.
Yeah.
This is not a new.
I understand, you know.
So.
Well, but they're gonna be changed.
No, not outside.
The exterior looking everything.
Well, that's, the historical has already proved this.
I, I'm just telling you, my concerns, and I'm not, I'm not.
But I'm trying to find out what you want.
Back and represent this to everybody to think about if it's important or that significant or not, so. I'm, I'm not, uh, you know, suggesting we vote either way right now, I'm just, this is the discussion. And, um, and then we're, we're addressing it prior to the zoning board, so. So if there's, um, so if the zoning board is, um. It's a change of view, so the zoning board, uh. Would probably be looking for the same information that we think, um. But maybe not, if they feel it's not that big a change, not, won't have a dramatic impact. That's fine, and the comments from the other departments are fine. Um, then, you know, I'm, I mean, I'm not trying to oppose anything here, but I am. Um, saying that we don't have any. Input in that, you know what I mean, so it's a commercial building now. And it's gonna be used residentially, so. People can ask questions about.
Well, this is the public hearing that's been noticed.
Right.
If there were people who, and we asked all the departments, that, that's what that time period of the public notices are for.
Mm-hmm.
And there really doesn't seem to be a lot of opposition from anywhere, or how many people are here, you know, from the public?
Hmm.
Um.
I'm trying to get into like, how is the, uh, how is it gonna be inside of the building, like? Each room are gonna have like this amenities and bit like, cause I'm. Cause it, uh, from what he has said and the things that we have read, and I think the things that I've seen and whatnot, it doesn't make. Uh, an, an impact besides like rechanging or repainting the face of the building to make it look. As it was before, and pretty besides that, I guess, what we were bringing us opinion as making the parking lot in front of things sideways. But besides that, they would.
Well, there's. I, again, um, so if we were looking at this project.
Hmm.
And assuming everything that we see there is gonna be the same as it was.
Hmm.
Um, the outside's gonna look nicer. Um, so the big difference is now we have people living here, and. Um, so we can focus on that, about where, where. How are we gonna handle the rubbish for those people?
Like where their, the, the bedrooms are be, where their bath.
Pack neighbors.
Kitchen.
Um, and, you know, how about security lighting, maybe we feel that that should be necessary on this kind of a residence.
Okay, so, let, let me just say this, on either side of this building. There is, there are three families on either side of this building.
Mm-hmm.
This. Right now, we have a lot of commercial space in town that's not in use. People are not renting it, there are not businesses there.
Sure.
There's going to be, I think. Less impact as far as less people going in and out of that building. Disrupt, disrupting the neighbors on either side, cause those are residential properties on either side of this building.
Yes.
I almost think that his thoughts are more conducive to what is there.
I, I'm not.
I'm probably.
Larry.
Yeah, Michael?
Say it up. I just, I, I put my hand up a while ago, I just didn't know if you saw.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I was just like, you know, hey, I was back too, but I also wanted to kind of talk about. Um, I went out there and toured the property the other day with, uh, Mike Crowley. Um, and based off of what I saw to the, the unit, um, to the left of the proposed, uh, project. Um, it's a mixed use building, and then on the one on the right is the, the multifamily, and then there's, there's commercial space. Um, you know, dealing with what I deal with in, in my professional life. Um, there is a desperate need for housing, um, in, in, in the state of Massachusetts, and, you know, the country in general. Um, especially older, you know, you know, anything for older housing, one bedrooms would definitely be conducive to this. Um, coming from the, the town's best interest, in, in my opinion. Um, based off of what I've been seeing and the reports we've been, that I've been coming across. Townsend is an aging population, so one bedroom apartments, affordable housing, I feel like. This whole conversion is thinking of the town's best interest, instead of leaving the, these properties vacant, cause. It, it's not a trend that's going away, commercial buildings are definitely leaving, uh, more people are working from home, and they're, they're not gonna. Open up a, a small shop in the center of town, they're gonna work from home, cause they have the ability to. So I, 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 I think it's a good idea with what, um, he's proposed, I think that a lot of thought has gone into it. Um, especially with, uh, the conversations that have come up about him. Saying people were driving to that back parking lot, creating another nuisance, almost like a road. To get to this parking spot, because they couldn't really park in the, in, in the front. Um, there's already a dumpster unseen, there, there's really, you know, honestly, this is gonna create less of an impact than what is already there. Um, so. I just want to have, have a, put my, my comment in there, um, I think this is a good idea. Um, I think that the, the proposed plan, that everything I've seen, there's some really. Great thoughts put into this, and some, some considerable time to, to. Consider the people next to them, um, neighbors, and, and the impact not on just his benefit, but the town's benefit. Yeah, so talking to Mike's point, that also, uh, I, I think I see that if that, if that building does flourish and actually people are seeing it. Uh, Laurie mentioned earlier that there is multiple places in.
uh, where you mentioned earlier that there is multiple places in, in the center that there are supposed to be commercial, but still not being used. This could be also more possibly like making, showing that older owners, like, oh, we can actually use this and help also the, the Townsend Center to actually bring more, since we have a lack of, of, of housing in this area too. And like Mike said, there's a aging community that is also good.
Well, I think.
Possibly impacted.
That we had, um, two forty-one Main Street here. And they can't rent out their space, they have a commercial building.
I'm not opposed to be change of use, this is not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Alright, I'm not opposed to the change of use. And I totally understand the need, and I know the economic benefit for doing this. We have an old building, if we don't have it viable, it's not gonna survive. So, I'm totally an advocate for housing that's needed. I'm trying to present, um, a vision about, we have people living here, and we have a better profile. He wants local people, which we're all favorable about. He's looking for putting one-bedroom apartments in as a target occupant in mind. Hopefully, in the, you know, uh, older bracket of, of age or whatever. So, now we know what kind of neighborhood this will be. And, and all of that is what we, all, what I'm feeling, that everybody supports. So, I'm trying to focus a little more on, okay, what's like gonna be there for those people? And what, how, how can we help that be better? And what impact it would have for the community at large? Putting housing in there is not gonna be an impact, which it would be good. Um, I brought up the other point about the commercial stuff, just so people to give it a thought, and have a discussion on it, and then move forward.
Yep.
And that's pretty much what I'm trying to do here, okay? So, things like security at night, alright, outside lights, okay? So. Do you know what I mean? So, when we have a comprehensive idea, then we have something to look at, and we can say, well, maybe you wanna do a different style light or something.
A more detailed plan.
Right, that's all I'm saying here is, um, and so one of the thoughts I had was, um, you know, uh, what was the zoning board's attitude about that? And I, I don't think the community at large is, we want this to happen, I think, and I think we want it to be the best we can do with it in terms of thinking the entire environment. And, um, so, these questions about driveway widths and sidewalks and, um, you know, how people get in and out, and where the dumpster is, and about lighting, um, that you're gonna have a little place to have a cookout outside, you know, these, we wanna encourage a sense of of neighborhood and family in this building, you're looking for long-term tenants. So, we're trying to get a vision of what's gonna happen here. That's all I'm, I'm saying.
Seventeen units.
Seventeen units?
But I, my tenants are typically twenty-year tenants, fifteen-year tenants.
Yeah.
But there comes a, now this project here is a lot of money. Yes. Cost of doing anything today has gone crazy, so.
Sprinkler system.
My, my, my rents affordable is the ones I have now, they're affordable. But this one, they'll be affordable, but it has to reflect, it's forty thousand dollars for the sprinklers.
I understand.
Forty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars a unit for one-bedroom units. But I had to look at it, I had to think, boy, I had to make this decision. If I wanna do it, that's what I have to spend. I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
It's gonna be really, really nice, and I'm gonna, but that's the law, if you have to do change of use, so many units, sprinklers. So, I've opted to do that. Uh, if I left it commercial, that's forty grand I wouldn't have to spend. So, um, yeah, I could rent the first floor easy, the second floor is not so easy. Uh, but then I don't get rid of my problems of my parking and my traffic in the back, I, I still have to address those issues. And they're always gonna be there, and they're gonna affect the quality of life for my other resident, my other residential tenants that are in there.
That's all I'm, no, that's what I wanted to talk about.
But I'd be happy to, to walk you through and show you my dumpster and my lighting and my.
Yeah, so, so what I think, what we're just trying to say, you, you all like to have a more detailed plan presented in like, that shows the, I guessing like, in lines and drawings or whatever. I'm guessing new visions and things that you're gonna be adding and things that go. And that's what I'm getting from what Robert is trying to present. It's like a more detailed plan of this, this is gonna be divided like this, and this is where we're gonna have this, we're gonna have that, where the lights, uh, where the security's gonna be, this is where the, where the trash or the dumpster is gonna be. And that, that's what I'm getting from.
Oh, oh, I'm suggesting here, is, no one wants to be overzealous on this project for you, you know what I mean? Um, and so, um, we, we just, these are topics we need to be discussed. And, um, so I think my feeling is everybody's gonna support you everywhere we can to get what, you know, to get where you need to be. And, um, but again, I, I think, I think we should have more information on these.
Maybe I'm wrong, I, I, my, my, my understanding was, this was a site plan review mainly based for that I had enough parking, and that I met those criterias. I thought, we're just saying, I thought that was gonna fall more of the, maybe, maybe the zoning board.
Um.
Maybe you guys, other stuff, but I'm not sure, I just, well, that was.
Beth, unless I'm missing something, uh, these are two existing buildings. They already have their parking spaces, they already have what, whatever this is on here. There's a building there, I mean, a new construction, and your dumpster and everything. I don't know what additional drawings or approvals or, uh, they, they've already been using the access to that parking lot, which was probably more used by more different people in the past than it will be in the future. So, I, I'm having a hard time. If this were a new development, or a real, I mean, we just went through this on, on two forty-one Main Street, which I didn't even do a sidewalk up. But I did this one, and in both cases, their conversion of getting more use out of the buildings that they have, in both cases, because the other one was not rented either, mostly empty. So, it's kind of like changing with the times and what's needed for our population. I'm not, I, I don't know what to mandate of Mr. Lorden of, other than what he's done, and for us to make a, a recommendation. I don't see, and, and under this, it would, and something that would fall underneath the, um, well, we got the highway department here, and the fire department, which are the safety issues. Um, there's nothing from the police department. I don't, I don't know what to make the man go through. Okay?
Yeah, so you already have other rental units with people in them.
Oh, yeah.
And so, whatever security you use on those rentals is gonna be the same that you're gonna use here.
Right next to it.
Yeah, so, so I, I think your concerns are.
Well, because tenants are gonna, they're gonna want that.
Yeah.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
I don't wanna burden you with a lot of the loan, okay? But, why don't you suggest and tell us where the dumpster will be? And what kind of lighting you would put here? So, you're, you're proposing that stage just the way it is?
Correct.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Alright, that's all I needed to know.
And it's a, it's a six-yard dumpster, it's not, it's a little baby three yard. It's a six yard, I'm just like.
I'm sure there'll be lights at the door, entrance doors and everything, then everybody.
Cause you're begging for a lawsuit if you don't.
Well, yeah, because.
And there's no lights.
Yes.
And the lights are already. And the lights are already, they're already there, yeah.
So, I don't care, I don't know what.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When he goes to zoning, he's going, zoning is the one who's giving him the change of use, not us.
Special permit.
Special permit. The building department is responsible for him getting his building permit. The Board of Health is responsible for the Title V.
Yep.
I'm trying to figure out where we fit in this picture, other than.
Okay. Parking, um, the flow, traffic flow, um, basically.
The highway department has answered that.
Access and circulation.
Isn't that the highway department? Is that us?
Well, we do have questions about it, but yes, the highway department has, you know, has approved what's existing. They didn't comment on this particular proposal, but, um, they typically will.
And I, I've been, we, we talked about housing, that's, on behalf, it. I do have, um, but maybe I can help them get involved. Two Townsend residents, uh, oh, grew up in Towns, Jeff Pelletier and Debbie Prophet. They, uh, they always rented from me in Townsend, and they rented from me in, in Air, and, uh,
Let me explain.
Debbie's sixty-five, probably, and just probably sixty-three.
Okay.
They, they would like very much to come back to Townsend.
Did you say Jack Pelletier?
Jeff, yeah, well, not Jack, but Jeff.
Jeff.
Yeah, the younger one.
Okay.
But Jack, John Pelletier's boys.
Okay.
But Jeff and Debbie would like to come back to Towns, and they need, Debbie's has some health issues, so she definitely needs the one first of all. She would have to have the front one, which could be handicap, or probably maybe the back one, but they haven't, they just told me that that's an issue. But that's what I'm looking for, two Townsend people that wanna come back to Townsend.
Okay, so can I ask the state rep a question?
Sure.
There's a process. So, when you're going to do, not for the upstairs units, but when you're gonna do the senior, senior housing that would count towards our affordable housing. There's a process, and you can't just, you can't limit who your applications are gonna come from.
Sure.
Okay, I think there's a, for two units, would he have to do a lottery?
No, but he would have to follow fair housing.
Fair housing laws, right.
We, we, that housing authority would be able to walk him through what's necessary for that.
Right.
Yeah, I should meet with them then, you know, and somewhat sooner than later, so I can at least have an understanding.
Yeah, I think you should.
Well, I don't have a problem with it, you know.
But you can't say, you can't today say who you're gonna have living there, is what I'm saying.
Unless you have a specific program, that like, on the program.
Um, ma'am chair, uh, we just received today from the land use coordinator his stormwater management determination, so I just thought I'd add that in since we're talking, uh, you are the stormwater authority. Um, and I'll read the letter from the land use coordinator for the record. Um, dear Mr. Lorden, regarding your proposal, your proposed project at two fifty-six Main Street, after reviewing your project and regulations, I have made a determination that this project, because of the area of disturbance and the slope of the site, does not need to submit a stormwater application. This is determined by the lack of ground disturbance and the site slope of less than fifteen percent.
Okay.
Um, so just wanted to mention that.
That's good news, yeah, yeah, um, yeah. Cause when you were saying that, I'm like, nothing's gonna be disturbed.
Yeah.
But, okay, so that's, that's a good recommendation there.
Yeah.
Um, so.
What is that?
Let me take up the letter, um, that you wrote asking for a waiver before we do, um, anything else here. Dear board members, I'm submitting this letter along with my site plan review application parking to request a waiver from the requirements of the site plan design under one forty-five dash forty-two. I am submitting both a plot plan prepared by Edie Boucher and Lancea Surveyor, and a design septic plan prepared by Tim Boishman, civil engineer. The plans were done March of twenty eleven as part of a new septic system, which was installed in the spring of twenty eleven. I am also submitting three aerial photos that were taken June twentieth, twenty-two to verify that there have been no physical changes to the design. The bath lot shows seventeen parking spaces, which meet the ten-by-twenty requirements as long, as well as the required width of sixty feet. Nine of those spaces were being used by the veterinarian and driving school. The change of use to four one-bedroom apartments will require a total of four parking spaces, which will free up space for easier snow plowing. In, in addition, it will eliminate the constant flow of traffic in and out of the lot during the day, which has always been a concern of the residential tenants. I am also requesting to continue the use of two parking spaces in the front of the building as the access for the two front apartments. These vehicles will be moved to, these vehicles will be moved to the back lot when a winter storm is forecasted. The change will eliminate twenty to sixty cars a day that park and pull in and out onto one nineteen. In summary, I have seventeen parking spaces in the rear lot and two in the front of the building at two fifty-six. The project will reduce the flow of traffic pulling in and, and back onto Route one nineteen. So, um, per this letter, he is requesting, um, the waiver to one forty-five dash forty-two. Um, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to waive the parking, uh, the, the parking plan for.
The site plan?
The site plan.
Review with the, with the application, with the, uh, information that he's already given us.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Any further discussion? Seems like we've been discussing all of this before, and then it was distinctly put into this letter.
Yeah.
It's funny how timing works out, okay? Um, anything else, Michael? Hearing nothing.
Sorry, I had, uh, I was muted, it was muted, I couldn't unmute it. I'm, uh, no comment, all, everything's all set.
Okay, so, hearing no other comments, I'll take a roll call vote.
Robert, carry on.
Michael?
Mike Barosco, yes.
Laura Schiffin, yes. So, the waiver is branded. Any reason of anyone to continue this hearing, or can we close the hearing? Um, do we have to do a vote before we close the hearing, or can we do that after?
We can vote tonight, we can wait till I prepare a decision. Um. It depends on whatever the board wants to do.
When is our next meeting?
Um, well, I think we're in August.
Office date.
Eight.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay, all right.
Um. Are you okay with us making a decision on August eighth? Do you think you're going to move along?
Now, because. As soon as I catch that schedule itself.
Okay.
Because everything takes so long now.
I know.
Oh, God, to get materials, to get contractors, you gotta get in the queue. Until I know I have it, I don't, I can't get in the queue.
It seems that the only thing that's come out of. Um, this, this hearing besides. Mostly everything positive and the recommendation from the housing authority. Um. I, I'm not sure how to word this, I think that if he does everything that. The recommendations have been on here and that we agree with the referral comments. Um. That we would grant. Or we would approve his plan with the waiver.
Would also tell the taking pictures are before and after too, or like the past year?
It's all interior, so.
All of that is interior and required by the other things, the only thing.
That, that was the reason I asked, was someone else also asked for it.
Yeah, I know, we did that before, but this last one, but he is, it's. I mean, the interior, he really can do what he wants as long as he follows what the Board of Health wants and fire department want.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Outside of that, and as far as before and after, that would be the front of the building, that's the historical society. He's going to have to comply with what they want. Um.
So we don't, yeah, so we don't, we don't need anything.
No, I, I think our purview was to look at it and support the project or. And see if there's anything else that the community might want to. See or hope for or.
And the community has the opportunity to be here today and we're not, so I think on our side.
The zoning board's got a very rigid overview of what has to be and that's in your bylaw.
Yeah. I'm just gonna.
We look at whether it might not be there.
Yes. Maybe you might, like, this, I, this is a really good project, I do.
Okay, your, your view. Okay. So I'm just gonna, for the record. Follow. Um, one four five. Dash sixty five special permit. A adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed uses. Um. It appears to me that the board has found that. The proposed use is within what's already been done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, he's not changing anything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as exterior and that kind of thing. Um. Stability of the site for the proposed use. Um. The board would find the proposed consistent with the site and is in favor. Of constructing the residential units, but they're already within the building, it's not like a new construction. Um. Impact on traffic flow and safety, it appears from everything we've heard that it's going to be less of an impact. Um, impact on neighborhood visual character, including the views and the vistas. Um. The historical society is taking care of what the outside's going to look like, it's going to look better than it does now. Um, which only improves it. Adequacy of the method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, it's pub, we know it's public water, it's a newer septic system and the Board of Health will take care of that. Um, adequacy of utilities and other public services. Um, again, it's public water. Uh, newer septic. Uh. I don't know that it's going to use any more utilities than what they were already using. Um. That one, I guess, I get it, right?
Yep.
Perfect. So for the record, I've gone over, over everything I have to go over. All right, so next time I'll be better. Oh, God. Good thing I'm not being paid. Being fired. Um, okay, so. I went over those things, we're still in the motion, I'm going to take the roll call vote.
You haven't, you haven't had a motion yet, which one is a motion to grant a special permit for a site plan review? If that's the wish of board.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion as some move forward.
Oh, second. Will we waive the site plan review?
Do you waive the, the?
Have another plan, okay, we took what he gave us, okay.
Voted to approve. Right, so now you're granting a special permit, site plan review, special permit. Um, with that waiver, so that's understood.
Okay.
Um, you can go ahead and vote on the site plan review special permit.
Okay, with, with our recommendations for the senior housing?
Yep, you want to include that as a condition?
Yeah.
Um, so you can utilize that if you want to. To, um.
Well, I think the consensus was when we were talking. That the senior housing with the aging in place was a good idea for, via win-win for the town.
Yeah.
So.
Do you want to, um, inquire the affordable housing or do you want to still leave that open under the LIP program?
Um, I, I think that's what our discussions were.
Okay.
So that would be in there and hopefully you could work with the housing authority.
My only, my only question, I'm assuming what housing is. That when I'm finished this, they would have people that. Who, that would qualify to move in. I wouldn't want to finish it and say, we don't have anybody right now.
Yeah. Oh, no, they can, well, it got, there's a process.
Yeah.
There is a process and they can't leave you with nobody.
Yeah, as long as, as long as it, when it's ready to rent. They have, you know, qualified person.
Yeah, but it may in fact be whom you know, it's just that he has to go through the process.
Right. As long as there's somebody.
Yeah.
And once again, once you talk to the people that are in charge of that, they will be sure, be sure you walk people through that.
And I've dealt with affordable in my apartments in the air, even in town here, I've dealt with them a lot. Not in the housing here, but with through Section eight or through the vet, through the vet, Veterans Association, the Vash Program.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot with them.
Yeah.
The process is exactly the same as what you're doing, you're just documenting that you follow their housing practice.
Practice.
So it's all the same thing, it's just that you're signing a document. Saying that you follow the process and your tenants will say the same.
They're right, this Townsend falls under the higher rent category.
Yes, middlesex counting.
Twenty years ago, they did that. Yeah, it, it does, so it does work out.
It does.
On your.
Yes, yeah.
Um, Mr. Lorden? I think this is a very serious. Subject on your behalf because.
So it is.
Right, and so. We're concerned. How we call this project. Doesn't impact you now or in the future, you understand?
Sure.
Some of these programs have federal monies associated with them and. They dictate to you how things have to work.
Exactly.
There is a distinction. Between elderly housing, affordable housing, assisted housing. And so we don't want to lock you into something that we didn't fully anticipate or understand, so.
Oh, I'll talk to the person.
Right. Yeah, so that you feel very confident.
Absolutely.
The name of the game is who's got control of what, that kind of business.
In order for it to, um. As. Affordable units. For Townsend. Okay, he would have to go through the lip program.
Okay.
And we have. Well, we discussed before, there's another project and that owner has to go through the lip program and that's a brand new, you know, scratch from the bottom up.
That you know, that contact person that you, you know that?
It would be the Townsend Housing Authority, correct? That, so we do have an.
Sure, fine.
Johnny, so what would be the wording on this, would you like to specifically take a, you know, take a. Jab at it if you will, for a lack of a better word, for the decision, so that condition is settled.
Well, the, the owner agrees to meet with the housing authority and work to get to. Um, senior housing, aging in place, that will keep them there longer.
Sure.
Um. As part of, as part of the special permit.
Would be age restricted, not senior housing.
Okay, age restricted, that's right.
Um. Again, this.
But that's the same thing, fifty five and over, right? Age restricted is fifty five and over.
That's the way the bylaws.
Okay.
Um. I, I, um. As far as. Um. So we're at a situation where. We're approving multi-family project, that's bottom line, okay, or. And then. The actual. Occupants, uh, the type of occupant or, uh. The characteristics of the house, yeah, we understand that you're seeking a single, what you'd like to have is it. Pretty exclusively for somebody over fifty five years old.
No.
Uh, one person, not a couple, or, you hear what I mean, so all those are distinct things. Of how we title the project and because they have preconceptions to them. And so, um. And again, when people have a vision, if you say this is all assisted living, they are, always, always know what that is. But right now. Until that is further. Defined by you. Um, it's a multi-family housing project as far as we know is the basic subject here. Which is no problem with that, you have all the feedback on that. Um, and then, so the kinds of programs that could be available to you privately or publicly. Um, maybe something you want to consider. Uh, but in terms of the town. The town's got to have an idea that. You know. If you say this is for single people, one person in a unit, that makes a big difference than if there are two people in the unit or. A family ends up there, so. Um, so we have to be very strong on what we're saying, we're thinking is going to be there.
Only one bedroom, I'm not sure only one person.
Okay.
It'll be one bed.
All right, so there's, that's the refinement we knew.
Oh, right.
So you determine now. But you may want to talk to different resources here, uh, depending on whatever needs you to.
I would think that ultimately you would have the decision of who your tenants would be.
True.
And I think that you'll have a choice.
Sure.
There's not enough housing for rentals, so you're going to have more than one.
Fix what breaks, it's going to be all random. Yeah, it'll be fine.
Can we go back to what you have for a motion, please?
Um, so we have that one condition just before you make the motion, so. Um, just make sure you add that condition and the motion would be, would be moving to grant the site plan review special permit. To Lorden Revocable Trust. Um, and you have a legal notice. For the property located.
Yeah.
At fifty, this moving street. With that condition. That we found them.
Okay, so we're granting a site plan review special permit under one forty five dash forty two, section one forty five dash sixty five. For. Two fifty six Main, uh, okay, for. The Lorden. Revocable Trust, Michael Lorden trustee. For two fifty six Main Street, map fifty one, block thirty one, lot zero.
Mine's subject to.
Subject to the condition of two of the units being, um.
Age restricted.
Age restricted affordable housing. Which will put it into that affordable housing category. I don't have to expand on that, right, that says it. Am I right? Chaz?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So that would be the motion as I just stated, is it so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I see.
There's a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. Um. So what's being proposed here? Is a multi-family. Age restricted, right? Affordable.
Age restricted for the.
Well, see, that's.
For the first, first.
First floor, two units.
Okay, so.
Please write that in.
Just want to make sure, so you don't have.
First floor.
All right, so that's two.
It was in my mind.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Very good for her.
Yep.
Thank you for doing that. Cause it is meant for the first floor, it's not meant for a whole building. And so we have a, a second and that was your discussion, any further discussion?
Anything?
Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
You're on team, yes.
Robert Darian.
Carol Hosses, yes.
Michael?
Mike Barosko, yes.
Laura Schiffin, yes. There we go, thank you. Um. I would like to.
We're going to close. I need a motion to close the public hearing. At eight twenty one P M. I think a motion to close the public hearing for eight twenty one P M.
Is there a second?
You're on.
Is there a second?
I see. Oh, so.
No, I've got three seconds. Roll call vote, please.
You're on, yes, Robert Darian.
Carol Hosses, yes.
Michael?
Mike Barosko, yes.
Laura Schiffin, yes. Public hearing is closed, you're fine. And, okay, I have a motion to have the chair sign out of committee for the board once the decision is, uh, written.
I should move.
One second. Any further discussion, hearing done, roll call vote.
You're on, yes.
Robert Darian.
Carol Hosses, yes.
Michael?
Mike Barosko, yes.
Laura Schiffin, yes. Okay, so that one is complete. Um. Thank you, Mr. Lorden.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, for your patience, I have.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you, thanks. Thank Beth and Mike for very help. As was Eric.
Oh, good.
It's very helpful.
Did you hear that, Mike Crowley? Thank you for your.
I did, thank you very much.
Okay.
You're very helpful.
Oh, thank you.
All right, take care, good luck. Okay.
Do you want me to call? Uh, excuse me, Madam Chair, would you like me to call?
Well, we've got a work session now, do you want me to go back to correspondence, he's under correspondence, oh, because it's getting late? Okay, um. Yes, you can come and, and have him do, we'll go to four point one, but for three point one, I need you to get the, um, HPP. Attachment for the, that one.
And while he's on, speaking to you, I'll be back.
Awesome, yeah, that's perfect. Anybody need a break?
I.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
One.
Five minutes.
I know the feeling, I know the feeling.
Yes.
Stretch the line. It's probably your opportunity to.
Hi, this is Beth Baxton, one of the planning board. Um, we are, uh, on a little break here in the planning board meeting. And as soon as we come back, we're hoping that you might be able to call in and give us an update before we. So I'm gonna send you a text and, um, hopefully we'll get one soon. Thank you.
Body parts do not like the rain.
Oh, even though they've been replaced.
Well, that's all like the rain.
That's because if they've been replaced, they don't like the rain. Mine don't like the rain. Anyway. Because did you have both replaced?
Perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, they're both done.
Oh. Now everyone knows. It's a good thing I'm an open book. Okay. So we remember our guest. So when the B O S takes a five minute break, don't you go off camera and off recording?
muted.
You're muted. Go down the square for where it says selectmen's meeting room. Yeah, that one too. You can just click that one. You are muted. Good job.
Please unmute when you're back in session. Thank you.
Slacking off here. Okay, we are back. And. We are now going down to work session three point one. With master plan update. Couple of meetings ago, um, we discussed adding, uh, the goals. And, um, matrix. Which is in front of you right now. From the housing production plan. That, um, came out of the housing authority. As, um. Because what was in for the housing chapter through the master plan, we did not feel was adequate enough. And this was done by, um, consulting firm. Who did the whole, um, housing production plan for us, for the town through the housing authority. This, this chapter comes out of the housing production plan that the housing authority had a consultant for.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we thought rather than trying to reinvent a wheel. Um, or change anything in the, uh, master plan that's been presented to us. It's been long enough. That we have not had a master plan updated. Again, we've had this discussion before that this would enhance the plan. And and we as a planning board could accept the plan, amend it with. Um, this chapter of the housing goals and then. Have that vote that as a board as the master plan for the town. We have that authority. We'll submit it to the board of selectmen only for submission. They do not vote yea or nay on the master plan. It becomes what we have. It expounding on the discussions that we had before. Probably for a year now, um, or more, that we were discussing how. We just couldn't get the master plan done, that we would be better off. Um, addressing a chapter or two each year.
Right.
Um, and then we would always be up to date.
Yeah.
Okay, because it would show changes, just like bylaws or whatever. And it would be less cumbersome on the group that was taking that on.
Yes, right.
And we may feel that each year, depending on what chapter we're gonna address. That it would be different individuals that will work as a subgroup of the planning board. Um, and add to that. So whether it was the economic chapter or, um. I don't know, that's just an example, or the housing chapter again, although we probably wouldn't need this for a bit. However, Chaz, if you wanna, um, interject on this about. Um, housing choice and opportunities that, if you can, if you can't, you can just tell me no, but, um. And the opportunities that once we have the plan approved, we may be able to get further information or. Uh, correlation of the plan together that they would help us with. There may be a place where we could get help.
That it turns so.
Okay.
If, um. I want to avoid a slight and works on that. I'd be willing to talk to you about my thoughts.
Okay. Okay, so but am I on the right track here? To get this off the ground? Okay, so I just wanted to make sure this is pointing correctly, um. But I think that this, I think we agreed on this before, that this chapter. Um, of the housing production plan, which is goals and strategies. Um, is a great addition to our master plan and that's what we want to move forward to the board's.
So.
Am I right that? Do I cover that? I was trying to get my good talking, but yeah. I'm gonna agree. Did I? Is there something else that you would recommend that we add at this time?
No, I believe you take the right channel. I, it's not really a decision or a comment that I.
Okay, um. So I would entertain a motion. That the master plan that was submitted to us. From the, um, master plan committee, which is. There isn't one right now. Okay, that one kind of finished its job. Um. Be accepted. And that we add the, uh, housing goals and strategies for the housing production. From the housing production plan to our master plan and that that be our master plan as of this date.
Oh, my God. We'll, uh, use the housing goals and it's ready and add it to our master plan and also today.
So from understanding, it's probably. We already have a master plan.
Yes. It's been in the port hole for months now. Yeah.
And so we're gonna take it one piece at a time. And see what we can do and consider add to it or whatever.
Well, what we're, what we're gonna do right now is we're gonna accept that. Master plan from the master plan committee.
Right.
And add to it the goals and strategies from the housing production plan.
Okay.
Okay. And then, um, the, yeah, that's gonna be the motion, okay, to be effective as of today. The plan for the planning board is to address sections now each year. Rather than waiting for five years to take then three years to have a plan. Our, our current plan is fifteen years old.
Awesome. Yeah, yeah.
Twenty one.
Yeah, I just.
So.
Wow.
Yeah, um, well, there was one attempted in, was it two thousand and five or eight? Okay, that was not accepted by the planning board. And never went anywhere. So, um, rather than doing that.
Right, have it happen again.
Um. It's imperative for us to have an updated, um, master plan in order for us to be viable. To obtain grant money for different things. So it's important that we finally get this accepted. Um, by us, the planning board, and put this into effect. Okay?
So do you think? It should be on the record. Our approach to dealing with this whole plan. Right, and, um, so that the intent of what we're doing is. Well, presented.
I know that, um, we've had that reflected in minutes in the past. For this, the, the new way of not waiting so many years and addressing something each year.
Right.
Whether it's one chapter or two chapters or whatever we see, um, you know, if we do get some input from some other. Um. Organizations that may, uh, be able to help us enhance our master plan. We may be able to do that quicker.
Right.
But again, it is the purvey of the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
To get one approved.
I think it's a greater.
So.
They're always realistic.
Before we keep the discussion to move forward with the movement and then moving. Because what we're talking about now is just the plan of what we know, how we're gonna tackle the rest of the master plan. Then what we're doing right now.
You're right. Okay, so, um, the motion itself. We're moving forward and accepting the master plan committee's report. And adding on the goal, housing goals and strategies from the housing production plan. And that will be effective as of this date.
We're missing a second too. Because I made the motion and we never had a second.
So I just, I just repeated it. And now we have a second.
Oh, well.
Two seconds.
And do we have any further discussion? This is to approve the plan.
To prove the house.
Effective today. Roll call vote.
Ian Ortizius.
Robert Darian.
Carol Hosses, yes.
Michael?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Laura Schiffer, yes. Yes. July eighteenth, twenty twenty two.
It's like the discussion that is, that is a pretty cool idea to. Or I guess cool is like to fresh, you know, young people work, but. But it's pretty good idea that we, uh. I don't know if I'm gonna be here in that tenure, but for the next planning board who, uh, be tackling each chapter. Like, like one or two chapters a year or something like that, just. Because I saw Julie and you guys like doing all these things since before I became. Before I.
Three years now.
Yeah. I was an associate. Yeah, I was an associate member, oh, I was starting as associate member and. I wasn't sort of looking at you guys for the planning board and thing, and you guys see what I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, that's not fun, that's, and that was.
So in the notes that we will continue this on a yearly basis. What I would like for our next um meeting. Or to put in the portal for the board to review is the um. The planning board has the purview to um. Appoint the master plan committee and people to the master plan committee. My understanding is that it's done by the charter. I like to have that. In our portal so that everyone here knows um where we go for the people, how, how it's composed, kind of thing.
Okay. Similar to, okay, we got the.
Yeah, 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 okay. Oh, Eric has joined us and we got the master plan done. Oh my god. Okay, hi Eric.
Good evening, how is everybody doing?
That's great, we just approved a master plan, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
There you go, that's exciting.
Yes, it is, it'll be presented to you shortly.
I would be excited to read it.
Okay, so you are four point one under correspondence of our agenda.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, so I, I, I wanted to come and talk to folks. Uh, about a couple of things this evening, uh, I, I think some of the things I'll, I'll be telling you about will be things that. Um, you already know or in the works, um. Uh, and, and hopefully we can talk a little bit about um maybe some creative ideas to deal with. Um, uh, some of the expectations that are coming down on us from the state level, so um, uh. The first is, I, I, I think that, you know, uh, I hope that everyone on the planning board is aware. Of the MBTA communities requirements that came down in the housing choice bill um last, last year. Um, for um. Uh, that require all of our uh, uh, communities that are considered to be. MBTA communities or adjacent communities to have a uh zoning in place. That allows relatively dense multifamilies as a matter of right. Um, and I know that um Mike and his staff have been working with. Um, uh, uh, folks to try and uh come with some um ideas for how that will work. Um, uh, and, and uh. Uh, everybody I think understands that that's something that's just kind of looming out on the hor- on the horizon. That we're gonna be expected to handle at some point in time. Uh, one of the potentially creative solutions for that. Um, uh, for that problem. Involves a, a statute that was passed a while ago called forty R. Um, um, and for those uh folks who aren't super familiar with it, forty R is a, was a, a tool that was passed. Oh. Probably, I'll say. Hmm, ten years ago, twelve years ago, um. He made it further, uh, in an effort to try and incentivize communities for um. Um, allowing uh, uh. Uh, a um. Uh, creating districts that would allow a by right uh, uh. Method to obtain uh denser housing units that would normally be allowed under town zone. Um, and so, and Mike and I have talked about that as a possible tool to deal with some of the MBTA zoning challenges. Um, but recently, a, a, a project came up. Um, and I don't have the address in front of me, Mike, or, or Beth, you guys know what the exact address of that property is on Main Street?
Uh, which one, Michael, go ahead.
I think it's sixteen Main Street, let me uh pull up the map.
Yeah, so um, it's a. It's the, it's the parcel that's been for sale, it's been for sale every time I've driven on one nineteen. Before.
Wetlands there.
Yeah, right, right at the point, r- written next to the mall. Um, right as you get into town practically, I think it's the se- second. The second parcel on that side of one nineteen when you get into town. Um, and, and the owner is, is, or the, the developer is proposing some dense. Housing there that isn't allowed under our town's zoning in the way that he wants to do it. Um. But um, uh, uh, we were contemplating whether or not. Um. This might be a good time to have a discussion about a forty R district at that location. Um, and the reason why is for a couple of reasons, um, n- number one, um. Uh, it is a parcel that is uh. On the very edge of town, um, it's in an area that already is um. Relatively commercial in nature on that side of the street at least, and the other side has the school um. Um, and, and two. To give us an opportunity to, to, to see if forty R would work, and the way that forty, so. Uh, for those of you who don't know, my job before I became the town administrator in Townsend. Was I was the director of development services in Lowell for a decade. Um, and development services was the department in, in the city. That oversaw all of the land use boards and the permitting processes, so. Uh, my staff oversaw the planning board and the conservation commission and zoning board and historic board. They're all um administered by my, the planners that work for me. Um, and we, uh, uh, when I worked at Lowell, used forty R as a development tool. Because of the payment incentives that the state gives out for both adopting a forty R district. And for every um occupancy permit for a unit in that forty R district when those occupancy permits happen. Um, um, in addition, it's also possible, and I think Mike and I were talking about this too, to get um. Uh, to, it's possible to get school reimbursement for children. Who reside in one of these debt, debt, you know, units that are created in one of these districts. Um, so it's a way for the town to get reimbursed for some of the. Um, uh, perceived uh costs of additional housing uh in town. Um, uh, to the tune of, I, 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 um, I know that, that per unit. Uh, there was a payment of three thousand dollars per unit. To the town, directly to the general fund. When you uh have an occupancy permit. Uh, and there's a payment to the town when you create the bylaw for the potential number, I believe. It's for the acreage and the potential number of units that are created, and Mike had done some research on that particular. Part of it, so. Um, the, the way that in the past. Um, w- we use this in Lowell. Was when we saw a project that was coming in that was gonna need permits from the planning board and or the zoning board. Um, um, instead of having a conversation with those developers about the um. Uh. The relief that would be required under the, uh, the, the, the ordinance. To get their uh appropriate special permit or, or uh dimensional release. We turned that conversation into negotiation about what a for, the forty R district that we would let, have them propose. Would look like. For that zone, so we zoned forty R in a very, you know, project by project manner. Um, and so, uh, uh, the, the. Um, the, the way that that would work is that the developer would enter into those negotiations and instead of having a special permit. Drawn out, they would have, uh, you know, the, the zoning, the, the, the district, that, that overlay district drawn out. Then that overlay district would get passed and we would report it to DHCD. And then they could just build their project as a matter of right, because they've already negotiated the, the. The district in a way that meets the requirement, that, that they've already negotiated all the project requirements as part of that. How that overlay district would work. And then by creating those, those units as a matter of right, it triggered uh us being able to get. The payments from the state for the forty R. Um. And so, the, 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 the question that I think that we were, we were wondering is. Given that forty R is a possible way that we could try and create a denser. Um, uh, housing. Knowing that that MBTA community's requirement is sitting out there waiting for us to fulfill it. Would this be a good test? Would it be a good um, uh, uh. Thing to propose to a developer to say. Instead of coming in and talking to you about uh you needing to switch this project to an age restriction project. Or you need to, you know, shrink this project down significantly because there's just not sufficient. Non-wetland open space on that parcel for you to have something of this size and there's only doesn't allow it. What if instead? The planning board took the opportunity to say, hey, let's talk about a denser development that may not be currently allowed under our zoning. But let's talk about it in the context of creating the conditions for a forty R district. That we would then put on that parcel that you could just then turn around and apply for building permits for without needing any other release on the planning board. Um. Uh, obviously, the, the going through that route is not as quick as potentially um, uh. Trying to alter the project to meet the conformance with our um, our bylaw. Um, it does require, you know, town meeting approval. Um, uh, so that's, that would definitely be a, a, a hurdle that we would need to let the developer know about. Uh, but the flip side is, it gives the planning board the idea of how a negotiation like this would work. Um, uh, and uh, the opportunity to talk to a developer about. Um, what is a reasonable economic expectation for these sort of denser projects? Um, uh. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, it's a negotiation, and if we, if the planning board. Comes to a resolution and says, hey, this is the best we're gonna give you, and they say, we're, that doesn't work, or we're not interested. It's no skin off our nose, we haven't, you know, we haven't given them anything or put them in a worse place than they would be. Having a negotiation about changing it to an age restricted or a, or a, a less dense. Project, but it possibly gives us the opportunity to have a development. That would put money directly into the town coffers if we pass the district. And then money into the town coffers if they eventually pulled building permits. And then money into the school district budget if there were any kids that from this. That, that, that development that ended up going into the school district. Um. It's been, uh, the, the times that I've used it in the past. Uh, it's been very successful because the, the, uh, the developer understands that once they get out of the planning board and get that. That ordinance passed, they can just turn around and pull building permits and it's very easy for them to get funding. Um, because they can just get a letter from the, the town saying, yes, you can build this as a matter of right. Whatever you want, there's no discretionary permits required. Um, and so their funding is, is, is much easier, so I have, uh. I would anticipate that a developer would see that as positive. Um, uh. It, and as a trial balloon, it's a, it's a, a parcel that is, as I said, very much on the edge of town. You know, very much in a district where um, uh, you know, adjacent to the, the uh, the mall, it's entirely possible that. You know, the, the folks could be doing their kind of daily shopping and everything on foot as opposed to. You know, getting out and driving on the roads, um, it puts them, if they are commuters. You know, that much closer to, to um, uh, you know, the, the, the commuting hub if they're going into. Leominster or if they have to go out to Route three or, or to four ninety-five. It puts them that, that much closer to, to those uh districts as well, and so it seems like. A good opportunity if the, if the board would be interested to, to think about. Um, kind of a, a, a slightly different way to get some density in, in the district. Um, and because you'd be creating a new overlay district. Um, as part of this. You could, you could potentially put in, you know, re- re- request things that are not. Otherwise in the zoning ordinance right now, like inclusionary zoning, if that's something the planning board wanted, saying a certain percentage of these units. Had to be affordable or um, um, uh. You know, putting some green infrastructure on the, you know, solar, you know, have to have a solar roof or they have to have some sort of. You know, um, you know. Graywater reclamation, I mean, there are things that you could do that aren't in the remainder of our zoning bylaw right now. But because it's a negotiation, if the, if the, if the developer is okay agreeing to that. The, you could put that as one of the conditions for the, the district and have that flexibility that you wouldn't necessarily have. In other um, kind of special permit evaluations where you're looking at the requirements that are already located in zoning bylaw. So I did wanna just kind of take the opportunity to talk to the board about that. Um, um, obviously, I know this is something that Townsend hasn't done before, and so it's all new. Um, um, but it's a process that's been around for a while, and I, I, I think that, that we may have an opportunity to, to um. To at least try it out in a relatively uh, a lower risk situation. Than if our goal was to try to roll that out for the first time to answer an MBTA community's question um, or requirement.
Okay, Eric, um, can I ask you some questions?
Oh, that's what I'm here for.
So. For the board's information. Um, well, first of all, we've been trying to. In, in many areas of the town with town properties and affordable housing, trying to. Uh, and knowing about this law, which I think was January of this year, um, was coming, we wanna work. To getting some of those goals, and we knew that bylaws would have to be changed to do this. That particular parcel has been for sale for years. But for the board's information, how many acres is that parcel?
That is a question I know Mike has the answer for, I, I know we're talking about two acres.
Six or eight.
There's, there's, there's two parcels there that they're, that they're owned by the same person. That are actually right next to each other, they're long and they're, for the project they're considering, they're talking about using both parcels. I think the overall acreage is under three acres, but I, I can, Mr. Mapper isn't loading for me today, but I'll see what I have from their submission.
They were bigger. Yeah, I thought they were bigger and um, but there's a lot of wetlands. That's why it's not sold, so. Um. So.
So nothing we would do would relieve them from the requirements of the conservation commission, so that's a whole other piece that they'd have to navigate.
And the septic systems, you know, so, and I've always been a proponent of, and I've say it all the time. If the Board of Health says it's okay. That's your biggest hur- hurdle. Okay, that you work within the guidelines of the Board of Health, and if they say you can have four units, great, if they say you can have forty units. Great, to, to me, okay, to my way of thinking. I'm not, I, and I'm all for trying, you know, trying to um establish something, trying to. See how it works for the first time, because we've not done anything like that. I wish we could get to a point that if you have an applicable lot, no matter what size it is. Um, because we have plenty of small lots that are sandy soil and town water. They're perfect to build on, you don't have to have two acres of land or four acres or three acres, you don't. And that's what's restricted our housing for a long time, is the fact that our acreage is so big. Even, even though there are parcels that you could build on with smaller lots, so where we, where do we go from here? I mean, we're, I think that we would be in agreement to, uh, you know, to have negotiations, to work on a by right by law. Um. All for the same reasons that you said, you know, grant money opens other doors for other things, I just don't know. I'm just not sure how much you'll really get out of those parcels. But I have no problem trying. I don't personally have any problem trying. Michael?
I just wanted to offer a few numbers that were coming up. So the 40R was passed in 2004. So it's been around for a bit. You get the 40Rs, you get money at different stages. So if you pass a bylaw saying that this area is zoned for 40R, you get a check regardless if nothing ever gets built. So in this case, the applicant is proposing 30 units on three acres. So Townsend would get a, a check from the state for $75,000. If the units got built, the check would then get another check from the state.
Sold.
Well, if, if the units get built, the, the state then issues another check for $90,000 to the state. And then if any of those units end up having student aged children that go to schools, you can then get special funding from the state to help kind of support the schools for whatever difference is covered by normal taxes. It's, it's, they created this program in 2004 to be kind of the, the carrot of housing to incentivize people to go. And it hasn't, it has had some traction in places. And I know like Pepperell right now is trying to institute some. But MBTA communities is now the stick end of the same housing production plan. And so we're, we're trying to grab as much of the carrot as we can, so to speak. So, and it, yeah. And then,
This town has not been interested in that kind of by right or that's, that's why. I mean, that may have been around since 2004, but that it's not, it was not welcomed. Now we're on, because of this MBTA affiliation thing being adjacent to, we have, we have to accept that bylaw. And because that's also state funding. And as far as I'm concerned, I wish we could find a couple of other places to put in that 40R district. I mean,
I think you're not.
To be on Main Street? Do you have to be in that type of thing? Or can you be like where the industrial park is on term, on, off of Turnpike Road? That's been for sale for a long time.
Yeah, we, we can do a 40R district as, as an overlay district wherever we think it's appropriate as a town. Yeah, you can, you, we, you could have, we, again, I mean, I'm, I don't mean to continue to hearken back into Lowell, but it's my, it's my experience, but we had them, we did them parcel by parcel. We, sometimes we got lucky and there was a parcel adjacent to it. So we just expanded the district. But we were picking out parcel by parcel and creating new overlay districts for each parcel. So you could do one on this parcel that we're talking about. You could do one at the, you know, in the industrial park. Is that something that, that the, the, you know, the, the board and the town thought was appropriate?
Town properties. I think town properties should look at that. And give suggestions of where you could do the overlays.
I think, I think the concept's excellent. And I, what I've seen here is we have to create new zoning districts. Where we feel there'll be most advantageous for all the players, including the town and the neighbors and everything else. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of that. The things that I think impact how we try to select areas would be, and I'm saying this because I've seen this happen in the adjacent community. I can refer to you and show you the end product of some of this stuff. But so the things that our concern in selecting these districts is if we're going to do that and we're going to really be serious about promoting it, then we have to ensure we have the infrastructure or how that infrastructure can happen. So that it is a realistic project and we can demonstrate that we met the requirements and still made it decent, financially feasible for the developers. So in Townsend, the main concerns that are now and that are coming is septic sewer treatment and town water. So, so I think in selecting areas of town, what available utilities are, how far they are from fire departments and things like that are, will help us determine. You know, so in that sense, I think we'll probably have more than one R40 district, you see. And so that's all fine. The, so I, I can give you an example right now and show you the impact of how things were determined in a specific town. So that you can see the end product. So my office is on the Air Harvard line on Route 111. And the town of Harvard, I think went into an overlay program like this. It looks exactly like what this is. So it's high density housing. It's located on the Air Harvard Town Line, which I think they're taking advantage of the water supply coming from the town of Air. It's also, there is no, I don't know if Air has sewer there, but here is one town, the Harvard, that I think is using utilities from the adjacent town. And the other part of that is Harvard is a very, well, I don't want to characterize them, but they really haven't discouraged density housing and they have, you know, and discouraged industry and commercial stuff. So I can understand why they like to have it as remotely distant from the residential part of town. And those are all important things. And so if you go by there now, it's a, I don't know the actual size of the lot. I mean, the original scope of the project. But, and it's attractive housing, but the density is incredible. I mean, there's six feet between one house and another. And
Are they single family?
Yes. And you know, I'm, the social impact of putting people like in cages like that, so dense.
So like Boston?
Take a drive when you have an opportunity and go beyond the air roadie and head south towards the metro. And you'll see, you'll cross the Harvard airline. And there's that new gas station place. You'll see it right there on, on your
Yeah, I did the other day.
And the buildings themselves look attractive, but they're long and narrow. And the back of them has a two car garage and there's no yards. That's, that's a social problem. You know what I mean? Sorry, the people living there, but. But anyway, so but what we're talking about, you see, can be done. And this, we're, we have a responsibility to do something here. But we can also look at what happened with the community. So we can try to make improvement for our own town.
So Eric, what do you need from us now? What are you looking from us now? Are you going to propose or, or do you want for us to propose to the selectmen to put a warrant on a town meeting for the overlay district?
Well, I, I think that the, the first thing we would need to do is, is it would probably be to, for staff to reach out to the developer and have a conversation with them about this process and see if they are interested in going through this process. Cause I think that the, the easiest way to do this is, is kind of hand in hand with the developer where we're talking about the district together. Because i- if they are, if it's a part of kind of a conversation between the planning board and the, and the developer, you're, you're much more likely to get a district that they feel like they can live with and, and, and create actual, an actual project. So if staff had a conversation with the developer and said, we are, we had a conversation with the planning board, they're open to this as a, as a concept. And how do you as a developer feel about going, you know, working with us as a town to come up with, you know, appropriate conditions for a 40R district that would allow you to build a denser project as a matter of right that you would be allowed now? Are you okay with that? And if the developer says yes, which I would imagine they would be, because I think they, they understand after having conversations with Mike and staff that their proposal doesn't have any legs right now. They don't have any way to get what they're asking for. Then it's probably a two stage.
They presented something? The owners? No.
They just had a conversation. They, they presented a, like a sketch to Mike. It wasn't an application.
Uh, it, it, the common process for developers is they'll reach out to Eric and I and have just a general conversation about, hey, we're thinking about doing a thing. Is there anywhere we can do it in town? We hear about this parcel. What's the thought there? We have some preliminary conversations. Maybe they do like a concept sketch. And, you know, we look at it and say, oh, well, you know, you know, the regulations say you need this much parking, this many buildings. But they have not submitted any applications at this point. The only official communication has been Eric's letter of termination of like, this is what is allowed at this point. For these proposed, for, for that particular proposal. So they haven't gotten to the application stage and they're pretty far from that still. So.
And so if, if, if we, if they agree in concept that that is a route they'd rather take than, you know, reducing the scope or turning it into a 55 and over project and, and, and having less units. Then there are two things we could do. We could have staff do some preliminary conversations with them to see what kind of feasibility they have for the project before they came and talked to the planning board about it. Or we could just have them come to the planning board and say, you know, it would be, it would be a negotiation between the planning board and the developer about things like, you know, the increased density, you know, the, the, you know, are, do, do they, do, do they need a, you know, a height? Is the, is the building going to be taller than is allowed in the district? Is the building going to, are they going to have any required open space? Or they probably are. It'll probably be wetlands though. Or are they going to have, how are they going to deal with parking? And for them to flesh that out with you and, and quite frankly, to come up with a project that the planning board is comfortable saying, yes, we are willing to, to sign off on an ordinance that says you can just go and build this. And that's the ultimate spot that you, that it's important to get to because, you know, we, the, the planning board is really the, the one that's going to be proposing this ordinance to town meeting. And so you guys have to be able to say, we're comfortable that we know this is denser than the town allows, but we're comfortable because of the, of the possible benefits and the location with allowing this density and proposing an ordinance that would allow it. And then in,
Say, I can understand all of those things and I think that all of those can be sold. Mike, I'm, I'm just picturing the lot. Have they had testing done on the lot? Do, do you know if they've done perk testing or deep holes or?
We don't know anything about that. They just, they, they, I think they're at a very, very, very preliminary stage and obviously.
They new owners?
They're, it's a, it's a proposed developer, I think, who's
It's, it's the, it's the same company that owns the mall. I believe they've owned it for some time.
Right. Can I put this?
Yeah.
When we do an overlay list district, we can do it for a specific project or a specific developer. Or we can have an expanded district like anywhere in this area of town. So what I'm hearing right now is whether the owner of the mall is the same owner as the other two lots, we don't know. But there's a potential for like you, like the land you're speaking of, it becomes how many units per area, not, that becomes the, the, the driving force. So for example, the mall, you can see that they're having difficulty leasing parts of it. And so those could be turned into mixed use in an overlay district. In other words, they put second floors on them and things like that. So now you have a district that goes from the Pepperell line all the way to President's Mill, for example. Okay. So anywhere in that district, any one developer or multiple developers can come up with a project that would be allowed. How they do that project, whether it's four stories high or spread out all horizontally, is going to be a product of the parameters of the lot and the zoning and everything else at the time. So I think, I think it's a very progressive way to go. I think we have to be careful though, in terms of, the things that, one of the differences here that from what Eric is talking about is they don't have to go to zoning board. They don't have to go to the planning board. They'll write a use. So they can just go in and apply for a building permit and get approved.
Well, they still have to be able to do the Board of Health and they have to get a permit, occupancy.
Yes, but they're not going so.
There's no cycle review.
Here, right now, we get to know everything they're doing and how they're going to do it. Okay. So that's already, a lot of that's already going to be built in there unless we have some other, other requirements that we feel will be, we want to see in town.
But even if we don't get to that point with them, can't we just make that part of the district anyway?
That's right.
I mean, we don't need their permission to call them a different district. It won't impede them. We wouldn't be doing anything that would be taking a right away from them by doing this 40R district, right?
That's correct. No, you're absolutely right that we could, that the, the town through the planning board and the, and the, and town meeting could adopt a 40R overlay district that allows certain amount of density as a matter of right. Without further review by the planning board or the zoning board and without having a word one with the developer. Absolutely.
You can, you can have a district and put qualifications on that district and say, okay, whatever you want to do, however you want to do it, we will allow 10 units per acre, for example. Okay. So.
I just see the people standing up at town meeting right now.
Outrage.
If I, Madam Chair, may I just speak for a minute?
Yes.
So you, you have a really good point there about the people standing up at town meeting. It's a very good point. The thing, so because of MBTA communities, we have to have a 50 acre district or 50 acres of zoned district for 15 units per acre. That means in the next few years, Townsend has to have zoning to allow for 750 multifamily units in Townsend. That's the floor. That's the lowest number you can get. If we do 40R, we can get work towards 750 districts, 750 units through 40R and then just say, oh, that's also MBTA now. We get the same number of units, but if we go through the 40R process, we end up with close to $3 million for the town. Otherwise, we just do it without 40R and we get no extra money for the town. And so for those people, that idea of you're right, there will be people standing up saying, wait a minute, multifamily housing is not right for the Townsend for the same reason that we haven't had 40R district for the last 10 years. They might be right. And I, you know, I'm not going to disagree with anyone particularly. But unfortunately legally, we have to end up at a point in a couple of years with zoning for 750 units. And if the state's going to make us do that, I want the state to pay for it. So that's kind of the idea there. And this, this just happens to be a good pilot. And this this just happens to be a good pilot to see if a 40 R does actually fit. And it also gives us a little bit of pilot figuring out what is multifamily housing going to look like? How much pushback are we going to get? What do we need to plan? So you're you're all saying the right thing.
I really think there are some areas that we could do that that we could have that 40 hour district. And they're more sandy soil. You know, they may not be downtown or on Main Street. You know, or maybe they are where that used to be that shipping warehouse thing on Main Street. That was in one of our, that was one of the properties in the.
Bays boxes. In West Townsend.
Yeah, yeah, Bates Corrugated, right.
Well, for MBTA communities, there's no actual build requirement, just zoning requirement. And the same through with 40 Rs. You get a check for zoning, whether or not they have a build. You get a second check if they build, so it's worthwhile to work with the builder. But in this case, it's a great opportunity to put the zoning in. They might say, oh, you've zoned it for 20 units per acre. We're going to build 10 units per acre just because we decided as the developer, that's what we want to do. We still get the same benefit.
I almost think that knowing how some of these properties have been for sale for a long time, that if you did make or we made that change, you may get more people interested in doing something for the town.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The the one thing I was going to say is that the the other benefit of of doing a test with this particular parcel is actually going to town meeting and being able to talk about it to the folks at town meeting with only a very small parcel at stake. But being able to explain to them the realities about MB about the MBTA zoning, because like it or not, we're going to have to come back sometime in the next two town meetings with a much larger proposal. And the the answer is going to be, we have to do this because if we don't, we're going to get cut off from all these state grants that we have a possibility of getting. So using this as a test balloon to go to town meeting and explain the benefits of 40 R and why we think this is a good idea is a low, a low kind of risk chance for us to get in front of town meeting and kind of get them thinking about, yeah, we're going to have to do this sometime coming up. So I.
So much open space, though. There's so much open space in this town. It's not like you're going to get a city. I mean, I don't not in my lifetime, anyway. We're not going to see it. This become a city kind of thing. There's so much land. Well, there's there's so much land we can't even touch because it's either state owned or municipal, you know, we own it. But.
One of the other benefits is there's going to be a rail trail very near this parcel. And that and those that could get those folks breaking coming into downtown on their bikes or walking, you know, as a way to folks that are sitting out here on the edge of town to without getting in their cars, come into downtown and and, you know, and and visit and it's, you know, and they're and they're kind of a built in kind of a built in group of consumers for them all to hopefully, you know, minimize the amount of vacant vacancies we see in the mall because they're going to be a built in. If they get 30 units, a built in 30 families, there aren't, I mean, you have to drive a decent space to get to 30 houses you know, near that mall. But you'd get 30 units right there that would be shopping in that mall and going to the Walgreens and going to the, you know, the grocery store and and.
But you're really reducing traffic and that mall area, those structures, they can be altered to add units above them. And so, you know, so they become mixed use. And so if you like, you take, for example, that end of town and you say, okay, we have commercial here. We have a high school here. And then that specific part, right where the Pepper Line is, that's been business and commercial forever. So we're not really changing uses so much. Except we're really changing the use to a residential use being allowed there. And so if we were looking at another part, another parcel, we've already eliminated a lot of questions about traffic because they're not going to have to use their vehicles as much, for example. We already eliminated the question about some of the already, we have seen some of those little houses right in that area trying to get commercial uses. Remember, we had a few, they wanted to put a picnic thing there. Yeah, then we had the thing with the veterinarian. So you can see that already is a lot of momentum to make that more commercial. And now we have an advantage by making it our 40.
So Eric, it's almost 9:30. We have, we're not done with our agenda. What are are you looking from us this evening? What will move this particular thing along or are you expecting us to now? You want us to meet with them first? What? What is it that you?
I I think if we can get a general consensus from the planning board that this is something that they would be interested in pursuing with the developer.
You've got that.
Then I think the neck the ball would be in my Mike and his staff in my court to meet with the developer and have some preliminary conversations with them about it and see what their thoughts are and then arrange a meeting between the planning board and the developer to talk about, you know, the 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 requirements of what a district would look like. And I can work with Mike to come up with maybe some drafts to to float with some maybe appropriate conditions that that might want to think about.
Okay, so our next meeting is August 8.
Okay.
Do you want to be on the agenda for that so we can prepare? Or do you think you'll need long more time?
That might be a little bit a little bit, um, we probably probably would be, that might be a little bit too quick, but.
I'll let you get back to Beth, okay?
Yeah, we'll we'll let Beth know when we're when I think it's when we think it's an appropriate time for the the board to sit down and have this conversation with them. If that's okay.
Sounds good.
Well, I appreciate I appreciate you giving me the time. It was very nice to meet everybody. And I'll get out of your way. Good luck with the rest of your agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have 3.4. Mike, do you have some correspondence for us or does Mike want to talk about this? 3.4 is stormwater permit inspection reports, other related correspondence?
Yeah, the board received two inspection reports from the Wheeler Road project and everything's doing well. Plus, we did, the board received a renewal of their NFTs permit. So they're totally up to date and compliant. And that's what I have for correspondence on that.
Okay, and then 3.5 is stormwater regulations discussion. Mike, did you expect more discussion tonight?
Yes. If we if we can postpone if it's necessary, but just to give a little primer what we were talking about. Last recently, we voted to change some language to allow for not major minor projects. And so and I had been and you'd asked me to kind of work on if there's any other language necessary, so I just came up with some recommended language to add to just codify what that other thing is. Right now, if a project comes in and it's not major or minor, I'm writing a determination letter that it's doesn't it's not applicable, basically writing a full letter out and handing it back. But there isn't a way for it. That means that if you're a resident doing something small, you still have to come into the office and get that letter. And so just creating a language in the regulation that says this is what is baseline, absolutely not, never going to have a stormwater permit. Anyone who falls in that category can doesn't doesn't have to worry. They can just move forward. So I put something together really quick. Again, you can take a quick look at it if you want. Basically, it's a section to add to the regulations. And it's would drop in with the under the regulations. It would be section D, non-applicable projects. Projects of limited scope are not required to obtain a stormwater management permit or to submit stormwater management plan. Non-applicable projects must must have land disturbance or must I'm already noticed a typo, so I'll work on that. Must have a land disturbance less than 50, 1,000 square feet and in an area where there is less than 15% slope and be where a soil cut or filled does not exceed four feet in vertical depth at its deepest point as measured from the natural ground level. That's from that those metrics are kind of based on the bylaw, which is on the same form, which specifically says that if a land disturbance area is 1,000 square feet and has 15%倾斜 slope, it has to do a minor project. It's the lowest standard that automatically comes in at minor. And that's decided by bylaw. So basically, anything that doesn't trigger that bylaw minimum can get put below that. Some projects that are greater than those metrics might still be eligible to not need a stormwater management permit, but then they just need to come in and say, hey, I'm doing a thing and then I could write a letter. But it would allow for one less administrative step and for folks to easily be able to reference and say, okay, I'm going to do that project and not have to worry about it.
So if we put that on August 8 with your final.
Yes, without this this one, without this type this typo that I just I the best I'm noticing notice on my revision notes, but I did not catch when I published it. So, yes.
I read that. So so I I mean, it it sounded like it was more of what we were thinking it should be.
Yeah, that was the sense I got from you guys. There you go. Beth just changed the word be on that. The sense I got from you guys was you wanted to create a way for folks who are doing very small projects that don't really significantly affect groundwater and stormwater to not have to go through a rigorous process of getting stormwater. There you go, Beth. You caught all the changes right there.
Want to do something else unless you think because we did have that if unless you think you want to go ahead and vote that with the typo changes?
Yeah, if you're happy with this section D with the three grammatical errors that Beth had caught right now, and I see her correcting. I love that she can do that in real time. I don't know if you guys are looking at the document in the drive. But I it's just happened to be on my screen. I realized that maybe someone I could share my screen if you wanted to look at it just for the sake of looking at it.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah. So this is the language. Beth, thank you for getting the two grammatical corrections recommended to be included in the new a new category. This is a new category in regulations. This is the regulation here that the hyperlink. There's a section A, B, and C that's, you know, general information, major projects, minor projects. This is the non-applicable projects. And like I said, the bylaw, just to scroll down, this is the bylaw that currently exists. And in this last part here, land disturbance at an area 1,000 feet with their 15%倾斜 slope is greater, must fill a stormwater management permit for a minor project. So we can't until we change the unless we change the bylaw at a town meeting, we can't kind of go above. That's the ceiling. And so this captures everything that's below that, basically.
So if we if we approve this, this will go before the next town meeting for a bylaw change?
Well, you I would recommend this for a bylaw, but it also is this is written for this regulation section. So you could make this change tonight and we could just start working with it and I'll
Okay.
update E code because that's the regulation. Moving forward, putting something that reflects that in the bylaw, I think would be good to help people understand and have it more accessible to folks. But in terms of working operation, it's a regulation right now, so you could just pass it if you wanted to, and I would start working with it tomorrow.
We did discuss at the last meeting. Yeah.
Yeah, this is really basically I I took my lead. I took your guys' lead in saying this is what you wanted. And then I went out as you guys had indicated and worked on it and coming back with but something that matched what it seemed like you were looking for. So hopefully it does.
Yeah, so the regulations are under our purview, right? And then to put it into the clarity, if bylaw change can be done at a later time. But this would be operation. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the verbiage that Mike has presented to us here under D. 175 dash 44, Stormwater Management D. Send a motion.
Yeah, I'm I'll make a motion for the wordage for 175 dash 44. Will be put into the.
Okay, as of today. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? None? Real call vote?
Yeah, yes. Robert, Darian, yes.
Carol Hoxsey, yes.
Mike Veras, Mike Verasco, yes.
Harsha, yes. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that.
Thank you all. You guys are awesome.
Don't say that.
We're tired. Not just a regional planning commission. Everything is copacetic. As far as the MRPC, they are doing projects for us. And they have quite a bit of grant money right now, too. So they're very healthy. Beth, did you have anything to add under the MJTC?
No, I did a tournament meeting and there was a grant discussion. I did put that in the files.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. I don't I think then we did 3.2. And if we did, I don't remember.
Oh, we didn't.
Let me mind every.
That is. I'd like to put that as the first master plan is going to be wrong, well, for for a month or so, anyway. Can we put that as 3.1 on our next work session on the 8? Okay, it's 145 dash 54. The 8 was stripped of development by law. Or did we have to? What is our deadline for that? That's going to go on the warrant. Is that the one that Adam did for us? How long do we have? We have time. Okay, yeah, August 8 on that one. 3.7 is MVP, HMP Plan Status. Michael?
I'll give you the 45 second version. We're working on it. It's going well. We've invited Hillary King from the MVP who who is our partner that with the state who works for the MVP program. She's going to be coming to Townsend on Thursday to do some walk around, get familiar with the town and help give us give us some insight as to grants that we can look forward towards. But that's the 45 second update. That's the after 9:30 you get the brief brief. So.
Thank you so much. But make sure you got all that. 3.8, Discuss and Review Planning Board Fees and Regulations for Fall Town Meeting. We don't have to do that tonight. Did you get proposals? Are they in the portal?
Oh, 3.8.
3.8. Planning Board Fees and Regulations for Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah, that I mean, that can go to
The next meeting?
I think. What if I may assess Mike, is that is that going to be something?
There'll be more information for you at the next meeting. I would recommend moving into the next meeting unless you want to talk about it right now.
No. No.
Okay.
3.8 is going to be 8. Oh, my God. Okay, we're in the next meeting is the 8. And
4.4.
4.4.
Oh, yeah.
We did that. Yeah, we did. That's on about the emails and.
Yeah. How would the board like to meet next? We didn't, you know, them to spend.
Oh, I kind of like tonight.
Yeah, it was more engaging.
Yeah.
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 Not for the 8. No. There are no public hearings scheduled for the 8.
We can make it like you. We got fully hearing, then we hear. And then there was some time.
I think I think we can do the 8 here. I think we're, you know, as long as we have good weather. I mean, I really enjoy Zoom from fall to the end of snow. Myself.
We have we have to get clarification on that. My understanding is, and that could be.
Hyred.
They have to be hybrid and they have to have a forum.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
So.
Oh, oh, we have to.
And you have, yeah, the the meeting. You have to post for a Zoom meeting to get a community.
Involvement, yeah.
But I think you have to have, and that's the thing that I need to check, but I think you have to have a forum here.
I I think that was updated today.
Updated today that what?
You don't need to have a. You don't need to have a forum.
You don't need to have a forum here.
I think, I think they re, 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 because they've gone back five times in the last week.
Yeah. Where it mandated it.
Oh.
That's what it was. It was, it was mandated that way and that's what the change, at least to my knowledge, Mike, that's what they, they did.
They took the mandate out, so if I just wanted to be here and everybody else wanted to be home, that would be okay?
That's what I need to check with my company.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll meet on the 8th of August and hopefully we'll see what else they changed in between. Maybe they wrote it again. Who knows?
Yes.
Okay. So having said that and seeing nothing else to come before us, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:44 PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, a second, a third, a fourth. It's unanimous.